Never. It is, uh, six oh eight and I call this city council work session to order. Roll call please.
Councilmember Edwards.
Here.
Councilmember Phil.
Present.
Councilmembers on the way out.
Here.
Councilmembers.
Here. Virtually.
Here.
Councilmember Phil.
Here.
And Mayor Green.
Here. All right, we have a very, uh, a very short agenda, but I would entertain a motion for, to approve it unless somebody wants to change it.
Edwards moves to approve the current agenda.
Thomas seconds. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any extensions? Okay, moving right along, ah. I would like to introduce Mr. Sam Light from, uh, our, uh, Sursa, our insurance company, and he is going to bring us up to speed on what Sursa does and how he can, um, follow best practices as a council.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you all. Hi, council members. Lori, thanks for having, having me up. I'm gonna sit here and we've got my slide on the screen there. Um, by way of further introduction, so I'm Sam Light and I'm the executive director and general counsel for Sursa, which is an acronym for the Colorado Intergovernmental Risk Sharing, which is kind of a, which is why we call it Sursa. So we're the town's, um, insurance provider, the property casualty coverage, so we ensure your buildings, your automobiles, provide liability coverage for police officers or slip and fall accidents. We provide public officials liability coverage for, for you all, which is a nice thing to have, right? When you sign up for public service. Um, so a little bit more about Sursa, we're not a commercial insurance company, we're what's called a public entity self-insurance pool, and organized under Colorado state law, and alls we do, our only book of business, our only insurance are all the cities and towns and affiliated entities like housing authorities, urban law authorities. We insure at two hundred and eighty-seven, uh, entities around the state, that's about ninety percent of the municipalities in the state of Colorado. The real big ones, you know, the Danvers, the Colorado Springs, they're, they're kind of too big for cool, maybe the tail wagging the dog, right? Uh, but we insure almost all of the small to midsize and midsize to large cities and towns around the state. Um, you know, unlike your commercial insurance company, maybe your interaction, you think of a commercial insurance company and you have a claim and you turn it in and wait and see if the claim is covered and that's about your only interaction, right? But in public entity insurance pooling, um, what we like to, uh, take pride in is our partnership with our members. You know, we think having only Colorado municipalities as our only book of business puts us kind of close to our members, right? It helps us understand what your risk management needs are, what your coverage needs are, and we have longstanding relationships with our municipal members. Give you a sense of that, we've been with our property casualty program, I think, since twenty thirteen. Uh, if you ever love to join our, uh, workers' call pool, we love to, we love to coach you, we provide that coverage, uh, as well. You can learn more about us at www.sursa.org. Um, and we have all sorts of resources that are there for our members to use as much or as little as they would like around risk management issues. And in that vein, one of the things that we do is we try to get out and visit our members, uh, about once every other year, um, and the executive director, Bob Wallace, James Tannoy and I, we do, um, trainings for elected and appointed officials around best practices for risk management at the, at the governing body level, so that's, that's what we're gonna talk about, um, this evening. Um, I do want to make the training as helpful to you all as possible, so feel free to ask me questions as I go through the material. Um, because I think staff will send you the slides and I've got some handouts, so they'll always be there as resources, but if you've got question on your mind, or just getting oriented for the job and you have a background question, I'm happy to give you sources perspective, uh, on those, on those issues. In terms of the handouts, there's a, first one is Sursa in a glance tells you a little bit more about what we're about, and then there's a couple of some risk management issues that I'll point out later, and then, um, we've got a couple of newer council members, right? A couple elected in November, and he's, who's that? And then we have somebody who's appointed.
I'm appointed last June.
All right, very good. And now we've got a couple that's got.
Him is appointed.
Very good. Couple that have a couple of years under our belt, right? Or some prior service under our belt, right? So whether you're brand new or, or you've got some time on council previously, I hope the presentations have, have to you all. But one of the other items, the new members just got some, a lot of reading, right? Some books, standing out, Roberts, uh, or Bob's Rules of Order, and then I just gave you another book, so this is our ethics liability and best practices handbook. I, I apologize that it's written by a bunch of lawyers, but I take pride in the fact that I think we tried to lay off the legalese, right? And just talk about risk management issues from the governing body, the forty thousand foot level perspective. There's chapters in there about ethics and open meetings and what you need to know about harassment at the governing body level. I even got a new chapter on social media. Anybody active on social media? In terms of their government service?
Yeah, we could talk a lot in terms of governance.
Oh, okay, well, good. Of course, the people who knew a year before you became a government official still know how to find you on social media, so we can
That'd be great.
talk about that as well, uh, if you like, but I hope that's a useful resource, uh, to you. Before I forget, uh, one of the things that, uh, Sursa's fanbase for is when I go out and visit, we do bring a little Sursa schwag with us, so I'll just leave this, you can pass it around if you want some little trinket, it's got a Sursa logo on it, feel free to grab something out of the bag. I'm gonna talk about, I'm gonna talk about gift rules in a minute, in ethics, I'm gonna show you. Anything in that bag is worth well less than seventy-five dollars is the current rule. Sursa golf tees or a Sursa, um, set of tissues or something like that, you can have that. Let's go to the next slide, please. Um, just to get us oriented about what we'll talk about, we're gonna talk a little bit about the role of a public official, we're talking about some transparency issues, organizational structure and liability, about how everyone within the municipal organization has a, has a job description and that, that influences and informs your risk. And we'll talk a little bit about ethics and due process, though those are separate trainings. We, we do stand alone trainings on ethics for elected officials and on due process requirements around like menus, applications, and things, so we're happy to come back and do a more adept training, but I want to get a couple of issues on your radar there. Um, how many of you attended one of our presentations yesterday? One or two? Okay, so you know my disclaimer, but for the new folks, I do want to make my disclaimer, which is though I am an attorney, this is not an employee communication. I've noticed that Hillary joined the call, and that's wonderful for me, because all the hard legal questions I can throw to her and all the difficult questions that relate to administration and the running of this, the city, I can throw to Laura, and then I'm off the hook, right? But more, more seriously, you, you know, I'm, I'm happy to answer any question that you have from Sursa's perspective, but I do have kind of a good radar for what I call the live one, you know? Sometimes I'll go to the training and, you know, someone will say, what did Sam, you know, I got a question. What if another member of the board does this, you know, and if his eyes are a bit wide, this is gonna be exciting, you know? You know, my radar's telling me that's today's burning issue, so if it's a legal question and, and my radar's going off, that's for Hillary and her team to support you. Same if it's a non-legal question that's really in Lori's will, you know? I could still give thoughts from our risk management perspective, but what to rely upon, you know, one of my ultimate takeaways for you all at the governing body level, you know, as citizen legislators, is to rely on your staff and use your staff as a resource, right? To help you get things done and help you look good while doing it, so when you get it oriented for this job of being on council, there are no silly questions, you know, if you're like, I have a question of why do we do this work? What, what's this all about? You know, Lori's there to help support you and get you oriented on those things. Okay, let's, let's go to the next slide. I've structured my presentation in terms of what I call suggestions for success, or suggestions for commitments to make as elected official, that I, that I hopefully can help you succeed and also help reduce your risk profile. So my first suggestion may not sound much like risk management or management, but it really is, right? And that's to recognize that when you've got on city council, your role in the relationship to the community changes pretty, pretty dramatically, right? It's like, you're no longer just a citizen-elect though, right? You're a government official and that's kind of a twenty-four seven job, at least from a certain perspective, right? And by that, I mean, in, in the eyes of the citizens, in the eyes of the constituents, the people you take to the council from, they're always gonna perceive you to be a representative of the council, right? A representative of the city and this organization. That's particularly true, obviously, with regard to city affairs. But, you know, fair or unfair, sometimes that, you know, that perception exists no matter what, you're a government official, right? Do you all interact with citizens? They'll bet you do. Right? You know, and some of these might be, you know, nine AM at Saturday at the market, or the mayor probably gets a ten PM phone call, that kind of thing. When you interact with your citizens, you know, sometimes your radar may be going off, they'll, they'll say to you something like, hey, you know, what's the city gonna, what's the council gonna do about this? And your radar's going off thinking, geez, we haven't even had a chance to talk about that issue, it's counted. And they go, oh, you know, I don't, I don't care about that, tell me your opinion, tell me your personal thing. You go, okay, well, this is my personal opinion, this is my personal opinion, my personal opinion. What are they thinking? What are they feeling? Councilmember, 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 all the time, right? And so as they should, you know, your words, your deeds, your conduct matters, leaves an impression, right? For a citizen who thinks one of those interactions didn't go down the way they thought it should, for them, it might be, you know, it might leave a residue. And in a bad situation, it can even potentially raise liability concerns, right? So I need to be careful of that and understand that fair or unfair, that, that perception of having that hat on twenty-four seven is, is there, okay? Also, when you get elected or appointed, you're no longer an outsider to city government, right? You're now like the ultimate insiders. Right? Wasn't there a Michael, Michael Douglas movie a long, a long time ago called The Star Chamber? Right? Well, you're now all in the Star Chamber, right? And you're on the inside, the way, the way it relates to risk now, right, is that on the inside, you don't have the luxury, right? Um, of ignoring the rules that apply, right? And now that you're part of the local government, you're obligated, under by your local office, to follow the city ordinances, the city rules of procedure that apply. We all bump into some people who say, well, you know, I feel like I'm more effective as an outsider. Well, for them, you know, the rules that govern, government officials don't apply, so that's why sometimes people choose to stay on the outside. But inside, we have to commit to follow the rules, uh, that apply to us, which can be frustrating sometimes, sometimes rules don't work out and procedural rules don't work out just the way we thought they would, but you can change those within a proper framework, right? But your duty bound to follow the rules. Recognize at that forty thousand foot level that, you know, one of the primary job descriptions of role, there really is a distinction between policy and administration in local government. And I talk about that more later, but, you know, you're no longer on the outside when you're running for office or seeking office, you might have been a critic or proponent of something going on at the city, or maybe your view was, I, you know, I just, I got some things I want to contribute to the council, but now that you're on the inside, the role kind of changes because you're now, your obligation is, you're kind of the stewardess of the city as a corporate entity, you're ambassadors of the organization, you're, in legal sense, you're the fiduciary. Right? We all know what that means from legal sense, right? That's the obligation, the legal obligation, to put the interest of the organization that you serve as a fiduciary above all other interests. Right? That ain't easy all the time. You sometimes have emotional charge meetings, right? Or contentious meetings, or stakes seem like they're kind of high, right? In terms of serving that fiduciary role, I would tell you that one of your powers and prerogatives, right, is to take the time that you need and get the information that you need, you know, to make decisions that you determine will meet that fiduciary obligation. It ain't easy all the time. Sometimes, you have public comment, you know, right? Sometimes someone will show up at public comment, you know, very emotional and, like, council, you, you gotta do something about this and you gotta do something tonight. Right? But if you're thinking to yourselves, well, jeez, this is, you know, this is the first I'm hearing of this issue, you have every right and it's your prerogative to slow it down. Yeah, maybe a little frustrating for the citizen, but if you feel like, you know, we need more information from the administrator and her team about what our options are, what our resources are, maybe we need input from Hillary about whether we even have authority to do something necessary, you know? That's a good way to go. Sometimes there's regret around hasty decisions or ill-timed decisions, so if you feel like you need more time, maybe you just it's not right because you all as a, as a council need to deliberate on the issue. So use that to your advantage and that, that'll serve you well, okay? Let's go to the next slide. As I mentioned, we all got the oath of office out of way, right? I squared up old constitution laws to Colorado and the ordinances that we, okay, because you have to do that like ten days after the election, or then you have some, like, technical legal problem. So we got that done, that's good. We don't think about it all the time, but the oath has certain embedded commitments in it, right? Like, um, a commitment to respect and stay within your assigned role. It's a lawful conduct, as I mentioned, in terms of following the rules that apply, the statutes, the ordinances, and a commitment to ethics. Let's go to the next slide. I think also part of the oath and part of the job description, true for everybody in the municipal organization, but particularly true for the elected and appointed officials. And the administrator, they have that, those primary public facing, public interaction roles. Part of the obligation, the job description is to deliver good, good governance, right? Which I think, as I noted on this slide, is really dependent upon committing to some core civics principles, and if you commit to those, then by and large, the the related legal issue, the risk issue's gonna take care of itself. So, uh, before I package that, let me ask this question, particularly for the new folks, but for everybody. Do you like a process? Do you like a process?
Yeah.
Love it. Love it, right? We sometimes get a bad rap in government, you know, it takes so long, the process is so complicated, but process is a deliberate product of local government. Right? And you don't want to be a champion of process and embrace process for the sake of process as a product in itself. Right? Always consider issues on their merits alone, embrace process irrespective of outcome, right? Um, because after all, it is a product you as council provide, right? You think about it, you provide, you know, a forum, a venue, this room for people to come and talk to you about the needs and wants that you need. At the top of the organizational pyramid, you're in a unique position to help determine from a policy perspective how we put governmental resources on those needs and wants. And that's a, it's a deliberative process. So even if you don't agree with the ultimate outcome of that discussion, embrace good process, your citizens will love and appreciate you for that, they won't always give you a standing ovation for it, right? And if they go home from a difficult decision, and they say to themselves, that was a good process, I feel like I was heard and I was, and I was respected. What an awesome place to be in terms of building faith and trust, right? And your risk profile goes down. So on this concept of good governance, a couple of core commitments are probably, you know, commit to openness and transparency, and you know, compliance with the open meetings law, things like that. For the new folks, is like in, in public service, do you all use email to do your job as a council member? Yeah, we all recognize those emails that we send and receive wearing our hat as elected official, those are by and large public records, right? There's some exceptions to that, but that commitment requires an understanding, you know, that when we send that email, even if it's just a one council member that we had in our mind, that may ultimately be read by somebody we never had in our, when, when we wrote that email. Um, commitment to fundamental fairness for you all at the governing body level doesn't come up all that often because staff is doing the work behind the scenes to make sure that all the procedural requirements are being met, right? But at your level, usually props up during a public hearing on something like a land use application. Not normally, hopefully you don't have many of these, but sometimes, you know, to give you an example, you open a public hearing and during the public comment, the first person stands up and says, I object to council proceeding with this hearing because I didn't get notice. Which I always thought was kind of weird because they're standing right there. You know, you must have heard somewhere, you know? So that's kind of a softball one, but sometimes it's trickier, more complex. But from where you sit, right, at the governing body level, what you want to do is just, and we want you to do this on the record so that we can defend your decision. If somebody raises a procedural objection, just slow it down and ask your staff, right, your attorney, are we in a good spot proceeding? You know, sometimes it's, well, it wasn't, the legal notice was incorrect, or you didn't post the property, or there's some problem with the packing. We just slow it down and have that discussion with staff about whether there really is an issue or whether actually, you know, all the boxes have been checked and they're in a good place, and make a record of them, talk about it with each other and make your staff, and we'll be in a, in a good place and nobody will get much traction with a federal due process claim, okay? You wanna, new folks, you didn't, I hope that, do they still print codebooks? You know, back in the day, when you got elected to the plane, they'd give you this codebook, which is about this big.
The answer is yes. We have tried to get them to not print it for us because pretty much it's linked on our website and for the most part, uh, I don't know anybody who grows and looks up paper.
Yeah. Yeah, so they'll give you that book, but that, all that stuff's still out there and it's hundreds of pages of rules that the city council, you know, your predecessors have adopted that set the framework, set the requirements, both procedurally and substantively about how you make the decisions, right? And so you want to commit to applying the rules on a predictable and even-handed basis. You want to avoid being a council or an organization where the vibe is, you know, somebody comes to the city council with a request and their thought is, well, that was easy peasy. You know, the application requirements were straightforward, the hearing was a no-brainer, I knew what council expected of me, they asked the right questions and I got my approval. But then somebody else who feels like they're in the same position, the same type of request, their thought is, well, that's weird. Because, you know, I felt like they were asking me for some application materials they don't think were part of the requirements. And there were some wonky things going on at the hearing, but most concerningly, they go, you know, lo and behold, that's the night, that's the first night that the council, you know, took a novel and unprecedented interpretation of their own rules and turned me down. Sound like a good spot to be from a risk standpoint?
No.
Right? The legal concept, the risk that applies there is when people have that, when claimants have that in their mind, they're thinking the governing body violated my right to equal protection, because I have the right to be treated the same as anybody else who's in a similar situation. Or they say this fancy Latin word that I think I overpaid law school tuition for, sursurary, is just a claim, it's a claim that the decision makers, right, made an arbitrary decision. That the reasons for turning me down or approval were off script, were made up, were not supported by their own standards and criteria. So you want to be careful of that. I get it that particularly in the land use area, sometimes it can seem a little frustrating from your standpoint, you may get through an application for a final development plan and staff says, and the attorney says, and your administrator says, well, all, they've met all of our criteria, they've met all of our requirements, everything's pointing to approval. And as the decision makers, and as the judges, you have to approve that. And but you may think afterwards, you know, I, I thought the rules were gonna protect us from that kind of development. Well, you can change the rules, you know, within proper framework on a forward-looking basis, but you don't, during the hearing, want to go off script and say, well, I'm gonna protect this from this, right? By coming up with some unsupportable reason to deny this thing, right? That's just gonna lead to one of these types of claims detention.
Yeah, and I was gonna say, we have had occasions where we've looked at our code, as you, you know, you talked about, we've looked at our code and it says, this is the process, you know, this is the rule.
Yeah.
And someone will say in the room, well, we've never done it that way.
Yeah.
And I, my, my answer to that is, but, but the code says we should do it this way. And so if we've done it previously different ways, then you're falling into that trap, which is, it may have been arbitrary, because if you're following the code, it should be done according to, so if someone looks up, you know, it, it, the one criticism I hate is, I've gone to the city three times and I've gotten three different answers. If you're following the code, you know, sometimes there's interpretations, but literally, you should more than likely get the same answer.
Right, right.
And so, you know, we're trying to change that, well, you know, we've, we've, we've never done it that way, we're trying to either say, okay, then fine, we need to change the code.
Right, right.
Or we need to start following the code.
Yeah.
And, you know, I think your, your questions about, you know, due process and people, you know, coming and wanting to essentially have a fair decision, if they, they know the outcome sometimes is not gonna be in their favor. However, if they are allowed to present their case and they truly feel as though the city council is being fair in their decision and they've considered the rules, they, they're not happy, but they'll, you know, oftentimes they'll accept it better than if it feels just completely arbitrary.
Yeah, and they understand that, you know, you work within a certain parameters as, as well. From a risk management standpoint, if you have situations where the practice has diverged from what the code says, you, you know, time and resources in your, are short and, you know, and your agenda space is full. But if you have a one, particularly in the quasi judicial context, that keep popping up over and over, those are probably the higher risk ones that as time permits, you know, put some attention on aligning the code with whatever you want it to be, of course, within the appropriate legal framework so that you're reducing your risk. Because it may have worked out, it may have gone off script a little bit and no one challenged it, but if it keeps repeating itself, and particularly if it's quasi judicial, that matter, that's where the risk lies of somebody challenging that.
Right, and, and one of the things I think that we've done a good job at, you know, prior to, to, you know, a lot of the new people are there at the city, including me, is look at the things that we need to do in advance, so the form-based business overlay district, I think is a good example of that, where if someone, prior to having our form-based business overlay, if someone came and said, I want to put a form-based business in this area that's now a part of the overlay, they could, they could have done it.
Yeah.
And what you're saying is, you can't, at that time, if everything is permitted and all of our code and everything points towards approval, we can't say, we don't want Popeyes chicken. You, you have to do that in advance, and I think that we, we've done that in some of the areas where we think are really important, so that, you know, now now we don't have to accept that application and scramble to try and fix it in case anyone else comes along. We're, we're, we're trying to do that and so some of those things, I think, uh, we've been proactive about, and it's been helpful.
Yeah, ultimately, the legislative rules set the guidelines. Some of them, like PUDs, I don't know if they have PUD plans, but there's a lot of flexibility in there, it gives you some discretion, but it's not arbitrary. The deliberation still needs to focus on, let's pick up our criteria and talk about why they're met or not met. Right? And we'll talk about that later on in the presentation.
I guess that was gonna be, my question is if you could expand a little bit on, you know, we have these, these guide rails, we have the, you know, like, do they fulfill this requirement, this requirement? But at some point, it, it's not all administrative, or we just check boxes and say, yeah, yes or no. So within the realms of when we're inside of the guidelines and that discussion takes place for deciding, yes, we're gonna approve this or no, we're not, like, how do we protect ourselves within that discussion where it's outside of the check boxes?
You go by what the rules say, and if you don't like the rules, you change the rules after, later on.
No, 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 no. I, I, I mean, like, because I, I, I think when you're talking about land use and like, you know, do they do this, do they do this, like, if it's that easy, if it's just checking boxes, we can make it an administrative task. But obviously, we can't, so there's some discussion that occurs inside of there, so within that discussion, are there best practices for protecting yourself from somebody saying, well, you know, like, you guys were all aligned against.
Yeah, do you, um, do you have conditional uses?
Yes.
In respect for the use, let's use that example. So you've got the hearing and the applicant made their presentation, staff made their presentation, you bring it back to council and you call them special uses or conditional?
Conditional.
Conditional uses, quite often there'll be a condition, what, criteria for conditional uses is something like compatibility with neighborhood. You know, so we bring the hearing back, the mayor brings it back and says, thanks, everybody, good, uh, presentations. The council, let's deliberate. And, and I'll start, mayor, I'll start. I'm gonna vote no because I don't like it. That's a little rocky, right? You say, but we can get there just by using what I call Sam's rule of why, you know, we just have another council member will say, why don't you like it? Why don't you like it? And I say, well, I don't like it because it doesn't meet our criteria. Now we're getting somewhere, and now we're making a record, but keep going with the rule of why. Well, Sam, could you explain what criteria you're talking about and why you think it doesn't meet our criteria? And magically what's occurring is a deliberation around the criteria. Well, I don't like it, right, because it's not compatible with the neighborhood. Oh, could you elaborate on that? Why do you think it's not compatible with the neighborhood? Well, because our design guidelines call for pitched roofs and certain type of, uh, architectural style, and this happens to be a flat roof stucco, and they totally ignore it all by design guidelines, and that's why I think it doesn't meet our criteria and I'm gonna vote no. And so that's how we protect ourselves, and as long as there's competent evidence in the record that bears upon your criteria, then you're magically gonna get to a defensible decision, and the record will reflect that. The, the important piece from Sursa's perspective is, when you have those public hearings on land use matters, that is the one and only record that's gonna be used to defend your decision. When we go to district court and someone's suiting those, wants to appeal the decision in district court, we don't get a retry or re-adjudicate, you know, or talk again about the reasons why uh, we turned it down. What occurs in your council chambers will be the one and only transcript on which the whole legal proceeding will rise and fall.
And, and one of the things that's super helpful with that are the staff reports.
Yeah.
Right? So the staff reports will lay out the criteria, and then the staff will usually have a recommendation of how this, whatever it is, either Whatever it is either meets the criteria, it doesn't meet the criteria, and. So exactly some of those, uh, you know, you don't want a, a finding of fact to just be. This isn't, uh, compatible with the neighborhood. You know, you, you'd want things like, you know, the, um, the architecture is different. The, the height is different, those specific facts, and so a lot of times the staff report will help with those things that. Either the applicant has presented or that had been discovered as part of the process. And it will include those, and so oftentimes when you'll see in the motion or in the findings, there will be a reference to the findings of fact. In the staff report, so you can also have your own findings of fact, if something gets developed as part of the record, if it's in addition to that or another finding. Um, the difference is if you completely disagree with staff's recommendation, you're gonna need to specify which, so how. Let's say you, you disregard staff's recommendation, you say, we do find it's compatible with the neighborhood, you then need to specify why.
Right, yeah, yeah, and you can, you can utilize a staff report to help you build that record, we like, at Sersa, we like when the decision makers, when you all. Even if it's as short as saying, you know, I, um, thanks for all the public testimony. Um, I agree with the findings in the staff report and the recommendation in the staff report, and on that basis, I move to agree. You know, that, then I've got weeks of decision makers on the record saying, look, I'm, I'm agreeing with the fact, factual findings and evidence that is set forth in the staff. Uh, report, and the real, um. Um, contentious ones, if the, the most common risk profile, the highest risk profile we see is if. There's a recommendation of approval from staff, recommendation of approval from planning commission, and then the governing body wants to go the other direction. Um, sometimes if the discussion and rationale around it is somewhat convoluted or we're not exactly sure. Um, you all can check with Hillary and, and Lori on your local rules, but a good practice might be to make a tentative decision. And then do you use written resolutions?
Yeah.
Then come back at a subsequent meeting, ask staff to prepare you a resolution of denial. That incorporates your discussion and the finding that you made of council, and bring that back to you at a future meeting so you can look at it one more time. And close out the hearing by adopting a written resolution of denial. Right? And that, that can help, uh, protect you in, in that regard. Doesn't always have to be that way, but, you know, sometimes if you've got, if you've got split. Views on what the basis for denial is, and it's, it's a little muddled, then it's gonna be hard to sort out exactly what was the reason. For denial, just in listening to the transcript, so that's a good tool to use. Uh, to help protect the decision of the governing, of the governing body. All right, um, last, um, this slide, last, last piece, uh, commit to civility and equal respect. You all agree with this notion, I, I've certainly read about it in the, in the press and things. Does it feel like there's a, a little bit of an uptick in incivility in government? I don't know if you're facing that, whether. Hope you don't, but just recognize that sometimes the job will probably require that you practice, practice civility even in the face of incivility. But you're up to that challenge, and as the governing body, you control not everything, but ninety, ninety-five percent was on the meeting. Uh, mutuality and respect, I think is the important concept of good governance, you know, with each other. With staff that you interact with, with people who come in front of you at your hearings, including with each other, it's things like. Making sure that during your deliberation, that your council meetings are always a safe spot for any member of the council. You know, to speak frankly about what their perspective is on a policy issue, no matter how different than any other members' policy perspective, that we're actively listening. That we're having, uh, respectful agreements to disagree, right? That we're not letting disagreements over some prior decision drive, drive the way we do things going forward, right? And on that mutual respect with respect to. Staff, imagine how powerful it is if just somebody stands up during a public comment and starts. You know, making a personal attack on staff, and imagine how powerful it is if we just try to recalibrate people, you know, just saying, you know. Our, our council meetings are not a place for personal attacks on staff. You know, even if you have a concern, that's a private discussion with your administrator, not something that gets aired.
We're, we're very fortunate here, I think, uh, you know, despite some other councils that you may have heard about or, you know. Be, see sometimes were that very respectful, and, and I do think. Uh, in the time that I've been here, I think there's only been one occasion where I felt like. Um, a public comment was a little bit, um, above and beyond, you know, the, the person commenting was not wanting to keep to the time limits and. And I do think, I mean, it was beyond that, but it was, you know, it, it was getting to the point where I was like, hmm. Are we gonna get to the point where someone's gonna have to be asked to leave, and it didn't, it ended up working out okay, and I think. Generally, I think it's because the council demonstrates mutual respect and, you know, even agreeing to disagree. Uh, I think that sets a really good example for the public. You know, where you hear about some council meetings in bigger cities where, you know, there's a police president and people have to be, you know. We, we, we don't, we, we have generally very respectful.
Good.
Community and.
Yeah, that's a reflection of your leadership. And, and you have a name, this is by First Amendment, Oliver, or something like that. It's real, wonderful. All right, let's, uh.
Where would, um, special event permits fit in? Would they be quasi judicial?
Who's responsible for, for the special events permits?
Um, well, okay, yeah, so we.
Yeah, probably administrative would be my.
Two, there, there are two, two parts to that, so, um, I think you're thinking of temporary use permit, so generally our offense. Are permitted with a temporary use permit, I know that sounds crazy, special event permits are ones that are all out, so that's a different, it's just a slightly different terminology. Turned up, temporary use permits, we have some that are administratively approved. Uh, but for the most part, I would say the bigger ones come before the council, and we have, uh. Three year temporary use permits, and then we have one year temporary use permits for, um, for example, ski drawing boom days, the hundreds, the. Right time events, and those come.
So, so those could just be administrative? Is that what you said? But they, the bigger ones do come before council more as, uh, staying informed?
Um, we, we did it, we did some of the smaller ones administratively approved because. You know, as the city grows and the number of events that are happening, um, we felt like it wasn't, you didn't need to have all of the temporary use permits come before the council. Just generally the ones where there needs to be a lot of input, especially input from council members about concerns that constituents have. You know, the little smaller lemonade stand with, you know, a couple of kids from school is not something we.
Routine.
No, but I like to make them present to council, I think it's good for them, and then we can fight over who gets to make the motion to approve.
So when it's.
You know, in this, in this framework about quasi judicial, I would suspect, and you're correct if I'm wrong. That the, the permit request that's coming in front of you, it's not styled as an evidentiary hearing. Where we're making a decision about protected property interest, because you've probably set it up that there is no protected property right to get that permit.
Right.
But it helps the council wearing their hat as administrator of the corporate assets of the municipality, you know, using the streets or. Getting a permit to close the streets or temporarily use public property, so in this handout. It probably does not fit as a quasi judicial matter, it's probably. The first column is, council wearing his hat as administrator.
So like if folks come to us with, and, or input about, um. You know, the race series permits or, um, ski during. Our communications there wouldn't be ex parte.
That's correct, yes.
Okay, because if it were a quasi judicial matter, then that would be ex parte communications. So we're, we're welcome to invite people to give us input on those types of things.
I do recommend that you encourage them to come to the hearing, cause you do your best work when you work together and you're delivering, and you wanna hear from the citizens. I will tell you a dynamic, it's kind of above my pay grade, but people, I'll tell you about it since people call me and ask me, is there a statute or rule or that? The, the idea of, um, it maybe goes to the mutual respect, the internal aspect of it. Is, uh, you know, as the elected representatives, we're all elected to speak our own mind on issues. And I've heard elected officials call me, and they're, they're concerned about how they feel disarmed when people engage in proxy talk. Uh, where the issue's unpackaged and somebody says, well, everybody I talked to says this is a bad idea. And the other elected officials, everybody I talked to says this is a great idea. Right? In terms of respecting the process that you have with each other, well, it's the seven of you. And ultimately you get to decide, right? So we just, instead of the, the proxy aspect, I would just speak your mind about, this is what I think. Right? Because people tell me, can we adopt some rule that says, you know, council members get an email. Applying on a legislative or administrative matter, can we require that they produce that, so that they can know, we can know where they're really getting their feedback from? I said, no, but it's just having a frank and open discussion with the other guy about where, where you're coming from. And I think that helps in that, in that regard, but, you know, it's not ex parte to, on legislation or administrative matters to talk to. Your constituents or whoever you get your counsel from.
And the, the comments sort of like as a proxy for everyone else, we talked in the last, so. Um, as I mentioned to you, Hillary did a training for us a couple of weeks ago, and we said, you know, that, that it's not necessarily public opinion. That, you know, if you're making a decision and six people say this and seven people say this, that it's, you know, it, it's essentially that's. Public clamor where you're, you're needing to make sure, like, in the land use. Um, realm, you need to actually make findings of fact, not just five people said this is a bad idea. You know, you need to actually determine, does this meet our comprehensive plan? Are we, you know, is it, are the, is it appropriate under our zoning and those types of things, and not just some people like it, I think it's a good idea. So that's where you can kind of get away from, are you, what are you basing it on? Facts or just opinion?
Right, right, or where does, where's the perception of where the popularity contest thinks is not. Mm-hmm. Quasi judicial matters, you can't do that, which sometimes is frustrating, cause you're.
Using that framework you both just described, let's say like the residents of Sixth Street are like, this closing the street for the race is just. Harming me this way, this way, and this way.
Yep.
How do we, like, how does one incorporate that into the considerations or, you know, or. Where does that fit in that framework? And I, I don't mean to pick on that, cause just an example, but.
Well, I think that, so in that case, it is part of your analysis, right? Is anything that comes to you with, um. You know, the race series is, is a big one, because it, it is, it's a big event, and there is friction and tension between. What's the event bringing versus what the impact on the locals is, so, yeah, absolutely, so. This is an impact that I've heard is happening. So the analysis is, can we lessen that impact? Can we change it, or are we going to decide that we are gonna accept that impact? And so that goes into your analysis, and you may decide. You know, uh, where there's a way to, to, to change something, to make it less of an impact, we can't eliminate it, but we can lessen it.
And that might then be a mitigation plan that is worked into the T U P?
Right, so for example, just, one of the things that passed yours has been, um, you know, impact on, uh. The, the fact that there weren't enough porta potties, right, and then residents felt like their, maybe their property was being used as the porta potty. So the recommendation was to the race series, get more porta potties, so that's where we can.
Okay, thanks.
And you get to deliberate by adding your own voices to that, right? You all may be hearing that same information from the group, and one of you may have a perspective, well. Um, well, I think that could be mitigated, and someone else is contributing their personal view, well, I don't think it can be mitigated, and so where are we gonna go as a council? Cause ultimately it's the, it's the voice of council, right, we're just contributing our own perspective on those. Inputs, but ultimately we're working towards articulating that one voice, right? In that situation, in terms of your analysis, if you're hearing something, ask us something, in terms of a decision, we, we can make. If I have a concern, but I wanna see if mitigated is there a way to. If their staff can help you, right, if they're saying it's something we can't do, or don't have the resources, or can't afford more. Or less, or police, or, you know, temporary barricades or whatever, that stuff is, they'll give you those inputs as well.
And the beauty of having seven people is sometimes someone comes up with an idea, and they're like, well, why don't we just do this? We can do that, we haven't, you know, and that's the beauty of having more people at the table to come up with ideas.
All right, let's pivot to transparency stuff a little bit, I'm sure that Hillary talked to you about this in her training, just wanted to get a couple of things on your radar. But just remember, um, as council members and as a council, you're subject to open meetings law. There's a lot going on in that statute, but just as a reminder, the openness requirement is a statute, right, it says that whenever three or more members. As the council need to discuss public business, that's a meeting that has to be open to the public. That simply means a citizen has a right to observe that discussion. Um, the statute also says that any kind of action of the council may only occur. In a duly noticed and agendized public meeting. So things like, you know, pulling each other outside of the meeting. And once in a while, this came up in the idea of there's an emergency, and we've gotta make an emergency expenditure above the administrator's, um, purchasing authority. Is it okay for one member to call the other six members and say, you know, do we have your vote, this is emergency expenditure? That would be improper under open meetings law, the solution is to get a special meeting together as soon as you can. Right? Either approved, or if it's truly emergent, then ratify the expenditure. You get to stick your neck out or making that expenditure, thinking that, hey, they're, they're gonna back me on this one, right? You've got a good understanding of what constitutes a true emergency, right? Uh, so that kind of thing comes up every now and then, but only. Um, a meeting for purposes of this rule includes any kind of gathering, whether in person like tonight. By phone or by electronic means of communication, like Zoom meetings. Or email, right? So that's why staff has told you, right, email's a good tool. But don't use email as a substitute for deliberations, discussions of council that must occur in an open public. Meeting, and you've all got a good sense of where that line is, right, and so you'll all be able to self regulate on that. You know, you exchange an email with one other member, and then, um, you know, another member is copied and they chime in, we, we need to be. Okay with, and it's our obligation to put the brakes on that and say, oh, no, no, this is a policy issue that's in front of us, we need to wait. Have that discussion at next week's meeting when it's on the agenda. Why is it an open meeting violation, did you otherwise? Because nobody knows that discussion's occurring, the discussion's not open to the public, it's a public view. Um, so the first handout about email kind of unpackages this a little bit more, tells you what the committee's law, like the American's law. Say about that, you know, I'm not a, what do they call them, a lewd technology person, I'm not that, right? But email, an email can be a good tool for something, but not for discussions among three or more members of policy issues that are pending in front of. Uh, the council, you know, you can use it, in fact, the statute was amended a couple of years ago to make it clear that a meeting does not include. An email thread among the entire council, if it solely relates to something like scheduling and availability. Or it's purely just an F Y I, or it's someone posing a question, you know, Lori sends out the packet and. You receive a packet and you, and Lori, you know, but copy the rest of the council and say, would you be prepared to answer this question? That's okay, even if all seven are on, on, yeah, email thread. And then responding to a constituent and copying the rest of the council is also okay. Maybe the mayor gets more of these emails, but she may get an email from a citizen, doesn't know whether you all got that email, so responds to the citizen and copies you all. After the administrator, so everybody knows that that citizen inquiry came in and was responded to. In all four of those situations, we all see what's not occurring, right? There's no discussion among councils, so that kind of stuff is, is okay. All right, let's go to the next slide. Uh, as I mentioned, the handout talks about that, there's also a Sersa article linked there, the openness rule is a rule three. And it's only triggered when three or more members are discussing public business, so that means that one on one is okay. But a couple of caveat to that, one on one discussions are not okay if it's a quasi judicial matter. Okay, because of that additional due process overlay, right, just like judges in court, you know, judges. At your level on a quasi judicial matter should not be discussing that quasi judicial application with each other outside. Of the hearing, because it's a due process concern, it's like you haven't, you haven't had the hearing, you haven't heard the evidence, you shouldn't be talking with each other. Outside of the hearing about how you're gonna decide the case, and then second, it's a rule three. So one on one's okay, and one on one can be part of the job in building relationships, you know, if you're new to the council, you wanna sit down with a coffee with the mayor and. Get to know each other, sure, that's fine, wholly permissible. But isn't that a different, what about this phrase, the dynamic of three's okay, one on one's okay, but what about? One on one, one on one, one on one, one, right? They call that, they got all sorts of names for it, daisy chain meeting, serial meeting, they cut to the chase. If there's ever a situation where someone challenges you and the evidence suggests, right, that what occurred was a decision was reached. Outside of a meeting through a series of one on one discussions, and what really occurred at the public meeting was a mere rubber stamping. And some decision that was reached outside of the meeting by one. on some decision that was reached outside of the meeting by one-on-one discussions? Then that's going to be a problem in the open meeting. Okay? So we want to be careful about that risk. We want to self-regulate on that issue. We all too, you know, where those lines are. The reason I say we want to self-regulate is I would prefer we self-regulate rather than have the state legislature regulate it for us. Right? To give you an example of where that could go, in Texas, they actually have a walking form statute. And their statute, I love that phrase, walking form, that's the, that's what they use in fact, they walk around in form. Sounds like Texas, right? But their statute says that if local government officials with the intent of evading the openness requirement of the state statute engage on one, in one-on-one discussions for the purposes of evading the statute, then of course, any action they take is voided. Plus, it's a misdemeanor, right? So I don't want our state legislature lobbing on to this issue, and there's a huge problem, because there's not. You all, right, walk the walk and do the right thing, right? Because we need to self-regulate around that. So there aren't these, there have been a couple on TV news with allegations of this stuff. I, we want those to be the outliers and always be the outliers, right? So that we're doing the right thing and that we're doing, okay? Social media, I'll just skip over because you said it was your personal social media account. But if you're interested about how it can relate to your job as a government official, there's a chapter in here about this. But one practical suggestion, if you are on social media personally, well, the people who knew you before you became an elected official, they still know you're on social media. And they know how to find you on social media. You have, sometimes especially, you have every right to tell them, hey, don't, don't, you know, private message me on Instagram or Facebook or whatever about city business. Do you have city email addresses? You have every right to tell them, hey, you know, if you want to contact me about city business, please use this email address. I don't do that kind of stuff on my social media because that's my private life. And that's a nice way to keep things separate, if you want to keep them separate. If you don't want to keep them separate, then read this chapter first. Yeah, we take that. Well, as lawyers, the US Supreme Court is currently pending in front of two, two cases that are helping decide the parameters and the risk profile around elected officials' use of social media. So we'll see what the home city becomes next.
And do you say text messages and phone calls to our personal phones would be a similar category?
Yeah, it's not the device that you use, the rules are content driven. Okay, so if it's a text or an email, doesn't matter if it's a personal device. If, if the communication relates to the performance of your duties as an elected official or concerns public funds, then number one, that's going to be a public record. And you'll have that public record issue irrespective of whether you have an openness issue. Okay, you won't have a meetings violation if it's just you texting the mayor because there's only two of you on that communication. But if somebody comes in, if you, I don't know why a citizen would request this, but if you texted the mayor, said, oh, I'm on my way, I'll be there in 15 minutes, right? To the meeting, to the council meeting. And, and somebody made an open records request for all electronic communications, including text messages of the elected officials concerning the meeting, then you have an obligation to do that next. You know, so, you know, this is kind of the frontier.
We'd ask our neighbors to email us to our city email, not call the Texas.
And I know that, yeah, I know in fact, now, if people want to text and stuff like that, you know, a couple of practical pieces. You, you don't have to do it that way, but if you do it that way, that's fine. Just recognize if you get a court request, you'll need to work with staff to figure out what needs to be produced. From services perspective, of course, we deal with scored dirt litigation, you know? We also help support members in court requests, but we want to make sure that if you get the court request, that we're complying. Because it can be embarrassing later on in litigation that if there's discovery, that these then get produced and discovery that weren't produced, that should have been reduced, produced in the court request. And in my scored dirt litigation litigation, it's really about, you know, everybody knows what's in the packet. But they really want to know what happened electronically outside of the meeting, right? And so electronic discovery is essentially only limited by the amount of resources that the other side wants to spend on digital forensics. Because the judges are going to say, they'll, they'll issue a protective order and they'll say, you know, if it's relevant and discoverable, they'll say, you've got to produce your phone for a swipe. They don't get all your personal stuff, but if it relates to your, your public official duties and it's relevant to the case, then yeah, they're probably be able to get an order that says they're entitled to take a swipe of it. Now, they can't go around and advertise it to the world. It'll be a protective order, but they can get that information if they're allowed to spend the money. One practical last piece on that is for emails and email and text message threads, if you follow the state records retention schedule, these kind of ephemeral communications that have no lasting value, you don't have to keep them more than 30 days. So you can delete them, right? Subject to Hillary maybe raising her hand right now, right? Not if there's a, you know, pending litigation or threatened litigation or anticipated litigation. And you need to hold on to those records, but you don't have to be a hoarder of electronic communications unless you really want them. And another good thing is to copy your staff.
Understanding that Dan Rabbinowitz keeps all of our stuff anyway.
Not text messages.
Oh, yeah, no, no, no.
That'd be crazy.
Yeah, but I mean, all the stuff on our computer.
Yeah, whoever's the staff, or you should be your administrator. That's your point of contact and communication and the person you want to have the in the loop relationship with. You copy, then staff can save you a lot of time and effort by, you know, they'll just do one final check with you. Hey, we got this request for all these electronic records. We think we've got everything, but, you know, do you have anything else that you haven't copied? And if the answer is no, then we're done, you know, just move on. Okay. I, I, we can always spot people who like to collect records. Back in the paper age, I used to, you know, we'd get requests and one elected official would come in with a very thin binder and say, this is all I've got, just a couple of pages. And then somebody would come in with a couple of banker's boxes. So same world exists electronic.
And I think one of the things you, you brought up in the beginning, which ties back to the personal, I, I did litigation previously myself and there was a trial I showed up for and I had a witness. And he came in, it wasn't a banker's box, but he came in with a manila envelope of documents and put it in front of me. I said, what's that? And he goes, those are my personal notes. And I said, what do you, personal notes? Personal notes about what? He's like, well, everything that just happened, this whole thing. I said, those aren't personals, you look up, you want me to throw them away? I'm like, no. But there was all these documents that we'd never seen before. And how bad do you think it looks that it comes out of the woodwork a couple of days before trial? But he, you know, he thought, well, these are my notes that I took in these meetings that happened. It's my thing, my personal. But that's the point, is it isn't necessarily there, if it deals with city business, if there isn't personal. It can potentially be requested, I don't mean to open up another can of worms, but blocking people on social media of your elected official.
So there's some
I would just say be very cognizant of that.
So our suggestion for now, and we'll talk about it more in the handbook, is if, if you are using social media and it can be perceived to be a tool that you're using to do your job as an elected official, basically, I have two choices. You can have the comments switch completely on or completely off. But otherwise, you can't flip it on and off because you don't like what somebody's saying. And you can't block people because of what their viewpoint is or what their content is, right? And I get it, in the social media world, elected and appointed and public employees can be wary on the receiving end of some less than courteous commentary. So you just got to let that stuff roll off. Here's where you can take the comfort, you know? The, last time I checked, there's 500 billion social media posts a day. So what seems like, you know, a crisis and a snarky and unacceptable comment, well, that's going to be yesterday's news and at the bottom of the thread before we get to the end of today. So just let that stuff roll. You don't want, I don't know how we got to this, but in some spheres, like First Amendment auditors and on social media, some people are pretty sophisticated, they know exactly where the line is. They'll get real close to the line in hopes of baiting, right? Into some reaction that they then will allege is a violation of their First Amendment rights. So, US Supreme Court is probably going to help us sort that issue out. If it truly is personal and you don't use it for any governmental purpose, it doesn't have any trappings of a governmental site, you know, you don't identify yourself as a politician, you don't engage with people back and forth about city business, then you're probably going to be okay, but with so and so, right, now, let it go. Is probably the most protected thing. Now, the one exception to that is a true threat. But under law, true threat is an imminent threat, right? Physical violence against you or one of them. If that's what you get, first thing to do is, oh, right? And then they can look at it, talk with Hillary, say, is there something, is there something going on? We should be concerned, and maybe law enforcement gets consulted. They look at it and see whether there's a criminal statute that's been violated. But it may be frustrating because the answer may come back, no, this is protected First Amendment speech. But you don't want to engage in self-help, you draw our resources. And you can turn the comment feature off completely, not on and off. Okay, there's more in the handbook about that. Let's go on to the next slide. So we're talking mostly about transparency. On the flip side, you know, you are allowed to have executive sessions, but only for a certain number of topics and only after you follow very specific procedures. Just as the governing body from where you sit in terms of the management risk, probably staff helps you with all this. You've got a script, you're checking all the boxes. So the things that I bring to your attention from a risk management perspective at your level are just a couple. If, when you're making that motion, you're getting ready to go into executive session, if anything sounds off, slow it down. Did we get everything right? Did we make a proper motion? Did we check all the requirements of the statute about announcing the topic? Announcing the legal citation, announcing the subject matter of what we're going to discuss? And don't hesitate, if you feel like, hey, it didn't, it didn't sound right to me, slow it down. Because there are attorneys around the state of Colorado, they don't have any connection to your municipality, but they enjoy reading minutes, listening to audio tapes or watching videotapes and looking for technical violations of the statute so that they can write you a letter, says, oh, council, I bring to your attention the fact that you improperly called on executive session. And then we're off to the races with them, okay? So that's that risk on the front end. In executive session, you need to self-police, right? If you go into an executive session for legal advice with Hillary, then you have to confine the discussion to that topic. You cannot say, once you're in executive session, hey, you know, while we're in here, Laurie, could you give us an update on that negotiation? Right, you can go back out and start over to convene an executive session for another topic, but you can't mix and match, have to stay on the authorized topic, okay? And then lastly, have whatever system you have to protect confidential information. If it's written material, of course, if it's from Hillary, I'd be a little tongue in cheek here. She probably got a big red stamp that says attorney, phone, communication, so that's pretty easy to identify. But sometimes your administrator might send you this like deep background or some confidential document, like an appraisal, or maybe it's got this, says work product, that's a mystery. But if you, if you get, maybe she sends it independent of the packet. And if you're just wondering, is that for our eyes only? Just call and ask and have that conversation. And I recognize that the confidentiality of the organization of the council belongs to the council as a whole. And only the council as a council should be determining, you know, how to treat confidential information. So a good tool around that, in executive session, before you break from executive session, maybe it's the mayor or someone, says, of all the confidential information that we've talked about in this executive session, which information even leaves this room and who's responsible? And then as a fiduciary, you know, each and every one of us is bound to honor that agreed upon confidentiality. That's true whether you voted against going into executive session. And that's true whether, you know, even if you can't stand the idea of the underlying issue that was discussed in executive session. As a fiduciary, you're obligated to enter that confidentiality and avoid creating complications around inadvertent waivers or even intentional disclosures than the organization has to battle against. I know it can be tough sometimes. I used to, when I was a town attorney, sometimes people would be waiting at the door. Hey, what you talking? You're like, no. But that can be balanced, you know, in a, in a smaller community where people, and you, and the law requires we announce the subject matter. So people have an inkling of what we're talking about. But that can be balanced, that's an appropriate disclosure. And sometimes what helps build faith and trust in what you're doing, particularly on matters of subject and negotiation, is maybe you say something back on the record after the executive session's over. You know, something like, hey, just want to remind everyone that the executive session, where it was for discussion of a matter subject to negotiation. Just want to let the public know that if our negotiations, you know, get any traction, then we will, at a future meeting, have an agendized item for future council discussion and not change the public. And then they know that you're working, now you're using the executive sessions sparingly, but in the interest of serving the community. There is a risk, it's also above my pay grade, but sometimes, even if you're in full legal compliance with the executive session rules, if there's a perception of overuse of executive sessions, then that can, can whipsaw, right? And if that's the perception, I don't know what your community is like, but sometimes if there's a perception of that, then you'll get watchdogs who want to challenge you on every single executive session. So you certainly want to use it sparingly, even if it's allowed, and don't try to pound the square peg into a round hole. If this particular item does not fit under the authorized topic, then when staff says it doesn't fit, we don't want to try and massage it a certain way and say, well, isn't that legal advice? It ain't, yeah, that kind of thing. All right, any questions about that stuff? Yeah, let's go on to the next slide. Last piece on transparency, you've got all this stuff nailed down, but just a couple of thoughts from services perspective about running good meetings. The agenda is a wonderful thing because you probably got a lot going on, right? The agenda is there, you know, what's been listed on the agenda, that, that helps define how you're going to spend your energy then. And that's what everyone's prepared to discuss. It's, you got so much going on, the agenda's kind of a reminder that you don't have to attempt the entire elephant in one sitting, right? But sometimes, you know, you want to be cautious. There's an open meetings law compliance piece to this because the statute says, your agenda shall include specific agenda information where possible. So you'll want to avoid the temptation to add items to the agenda night of. Yeah, there's a continuum of risk there, right? If it's a simple administrative matter, maybe Laurie got a letter the day of the meeting from DOLA, wants to bring that to your attention and confirm direction about pursuing this grant. Maybe that's kind of minor at low stakes. But we certainly don't want to add to the agenda night of, you know, the most controversial, you know, because we think they'll be angry if it was on the agenda. Imagine how angry they'll be, right? If we added it night up. And a municipality that I used to represent was actually the one that was in the crosshairs on the Colorado Supreme Court case, having to deal with vague agenda descriptions and having substantive discussions on issues that were kind of hidden. So we want to be careful of that and just make sure we use the agenda as our guide. Because that's where everyone's focused that evening. In local government, we pride ourselves in informality, but whatever it looks like to you, you know, we don't, we don't want to become so informal that we are informal to a fault. So whatever your tools and techniques around that are, things that people ask us about are, you know, what about does public speakers need to be recognized? Do we internally need to be recognized by the mayor before we speak? Do we have rules around everybody speaks once before anybody speaks twice? Whatever that looks like to you all, just have good norms that help build faith and trust in what you're, what you're doing. You got a nice black book there, Bob's Rules of Order. I'm glad to see that. Are you in the process of adopting those, are you adopting those?
I've just distributed it.
Thinking about it.
Review, we've talked about it in the past, but no, it's really
Whatever you end up doing, you know, Robert's Rules of Order, the bigger book, 485 pages, it's pretty complex. I think I use Robert's Rules for Dummies when I have a question, you know, to help me understand it. But you can use it, but recognize that that's written, Robert's Rules of Order is written for legislative bodies that have a beginning and an end. The local city council doesn't have a beginning and an end, it's a train that keeps going. We get on and off that train during our term, but that's why Robert's can seem pretty complex sometimes. So I just recommend to you, really in local government work, there's probably eight or 10 items that come up, you know, regulating around making motions and how do we get something squared up for discussion or vote? Just have good agreed upon rules that help facilitate consensus is the magical thing, right? We all just say, I don't know what the rule says about needing a second level, but do we all agree? We can proceed, okay, we're good, you know, that kind of thing. Uh, next slide.
I was going to mention the one thing on our agenda that's, I hadn't seen in other places. We do have the housekeeping at the beginning and I, I former mayor Lomi knows that sometimes that gives me a lot of heartburn because it's not something that's agendized. And I, I think the only thing I would say is when we get into that, the housekeeping is fine. It's just when we get into a discussion or we start to feel like we're in a deliberation about a topic. I feel like the only thing on the agenda is if I was a member of the public and I looked at the agenda and I read it and I, I could make a decision whether I wanted to show up. And if I found out that there was a discussion about something that I was cared about, but it wasn't on the agenda. And I have seen other agendas, you know, in places where, you know, it's a discussion regarding housing. There are so many more acronyms, you know, my pet peeve is acronyms. I've seen things on other cities' agendas and I don't know what it is.
Yeah, or unfinished business or something like that. I have the empty chair principle as well, you know? If, if we intuitively look out in the audience and we see an empty chair and we're thinking to ourselves, you know, that chair would have been full. Right? If some person knew that we were going to discuss that topic this evening, that's a good way to look at that issue. But again, the open meetings law says that you shall include specific agenda information where possible, right? So if housekeeping, I don't know if you have housekeeping plus council comments and reports.
Yeah, yeah.
Be pretty intentional about what you're doing under housekeeping, you know. The open meetings law says that the purpose of that statute is to give people a window into policy maybe. So if we don't know what policies are being discussed, I would encourage you not to take up substantive measures under housekeeping.
I think housekeeping has been kind of a, just a bunch of different stuff has ended up there.
So on any of the other commissions on my, housekeeping is always itemized at exactly what we're going to discuss under housekeeping. Is it not done that way for council currently?
No.
Or does it just tend to expand?
It tends to expand. Yeah, and I think, you know, the point is, is if someone's just giving an update, you know, that there's going to be potentially a housing pollution event, and it's going to be the same, it, you know, council reports the same thing. I attended this meeting, this is what happened. Where I get heartburn and where you can see me getting heartburn sometimes is when it becomes a back-and-forth discussion and it seems like we're talking about something.
It becomes a deliberation, sure.
And the only reason I get heartburn about it is because I don't want us to ever be in a place where, you know, something got potentially deliberated and then it does come before us and somebody has excited us about that.
Yeah, yeah, or they get to the subsequent meeting and somebody says, well, we already talked about all this before, so let's just have a motion. You know, or it snowballs in the housekeeping discussion. I was at a meeting where I was waiting to do my presentation and it was council reports and somebody just reported a controversial issue in that municipality. They were trying to decide whether to continue to participate or not on a regional task force that was trying to get the attention of the regional airport around noise issues. And the split in the community was happening. People said, well, even if you can't get any satisfaction, you ought to have a seat at the table. So the liaison to that task force, you know, just gave a report, hey, here's what we, the task force, they met last week, they talked about this. And somebody said, the council member said, well, you know, I've never liked that task force, we ought to get off that. And somebody else said, well, you know, I think it has value to have a seat at the table, now we have a deliberation going. Then somebody said, I make a motion that we withdraw from the task force. Luckily, so, you know, who elected this? Out of our agenda, you know, this is an issue where, yeah, we have the power to ultimately decide, but it'd be helpful to gauge the temperature of the community, have an opportunity to public input before we make that kind of decision because it's going to save us from the criticism of, you did what? And maybe it's on half or forty-nine percent of the people, but it saves you from that and shows that you're, you know, doing things transparent.
So if it becomes a discussion item, then it can be added to a future agenda?
Yeah.
That's typically how you'd want to handle that?
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you. And a good, one tool I've seen, there are plenty of tools around this issue to keep our focus on it. Distinction is you could have an agenda item that says council reports and future agenda items. Some council members use that or even.
Good idea.
Might have a practice that just says under housekeeping, what we're doing really is simply reporting out stuff and then use housekeeping as an opinion to identify future agenda items. That kind of thing.
It's a good base cover, yeah.
Okay. All right, let's pivot. Next slide, let's talk about the job description and supporting the city meeting structure. Let's go back a slide, I think I missed my introduction. So as I mentioned at the outset, everybody within this organization has a job description, whether elected official, plaintiff official, employee, or even a volunteer, right? And it relates to risk this way. So the new members, please tell me this wasn't your first question, Hillary, but, you know, did you ask, can I get sued and be held individually liable for something that I do as a council member? I hope that wasn't your first question, right? But it's a fair question, right? Here's the good news, we have nice protections to encourage, you know, citizens to step up and serve their communities. And what I'm talking about here is just that risk. Can you be sued and held individually liable, right, for something you do or don't do as elected official? In Colorado, the good news is we have very strong protection. There's a statute called the Colorado Governmental Media Act that says the city and by extension its insurer, SERSA, is going to defend you and pay judgments entered against you for acts or omissions as a council member. Good news. Like most things in life, there's a catch. And our conditions that, those protections apply only so long as we're acting within the scope of our employment and not acting in willful, wanton manner. Those two phrases, let's unpack it a little bit. Scope of employment sounds odd to an elected official because you're thinking, I'm not an employee. Right? Like the administrator or the clerk. But that doesn't matter. It's just a phrase that's used in the statute. And what it simply means is understanding is one, job description, what their authority is. And as important what their authority isn't. I'm going to give you a simple example of that. Here in Leadville, under our ordinances, within whose job description, within whose scope of employment is it to decide whether or not someone gets a short-term rental license? Within whose scope of employment? Everybody else, not only yours, but everybody else, right? Now, it's true that if there's an appeal, right, you can see the counsel might have him in field, but that initial decision is in the clerk's scope of employment, right? That concept permeates municipal organizations, right, either by statute or by ordinance. So that's the concept we need to understand there. And then the other one is willful and wanton, and that's just a fancy phrase that's conduct that's intentionally undertaken, designed to injure someone's legal rights and taken with reckless disregard for what their rights are, even like kind of evil intent. And I got a simpler way of describing it. I just call it bad stuff. Bad stuff. It's bad stuff, and it really is. Right? In our claims world at SERSA, we do get every once in a while claims where someone makes an allegation of willful, wanton conduct against an elected plaintiff official or employee. And it's almost always this dynamic or this situation. It's almost always an individual elected or appointed official misperceiving that they have some authority that they actually don't have, right? Throwing on this book of reported governmental authority and going around doing bad things to people for a long reasons. And it really would be bad stuff, like maybe, you know, conscripting a staff member who's also not thinking about things clearly and going on a campaign to make sure that my business competitor, right, doesn't get a building permit or that my political enemy never gets a short-term rental license. Or I know it's untrue, but I'm going to, you know, make some accusation that they're a pedophile or defame them. You know, or engaging in malicious, tortious interference with somebody's business affairs, baiting or wearing some cloak of governmental authority. So, yeah, that's all bad stuff. Right? So we need to understand that. We all know where that lies. There is kind of a double whammy to that because if you're found to have engaged in willful, wanton conduct, then that protection, that obligation of the organization and the insurer to protect you falls away. And your insurance coverage has exclusions around that, right? We might defend you against the allegation, but if the actual civil liability is bound to be premised upon criminal misconduct or malicious acts or willful, wanton conduct, then an exclusion in the coverage will kick in and SERSA will not be obligated to pay that judgment, okay? Now, running the other direction, it's true, sometimes plaintiffs' attorneys appear a little overzealous and they make willful, wanton allegations. The way it really works is we'll look at those allegations unless it's admitted that the exclusion applies. Yes, I'm sorry, I committed a crime. I was actually convicted, right? Usually it's not that, you know, none of this is true. I didn't do any of this stuff. We'll defend that, but we defend it under a reservation of rights and we send this letter out to the defendant says, we're assigning an attorney, we're defending him under a reservation of rights, but recognize if it's determined that the liability actually flows from a criminal act for which you've been convicted or it's adjudicated to be willful, wanton conduct, then there's no obligation to pay that judgment. So that's how that works, okay? Any questions about that stuff? I didn't mean to be such a downer, but I needed to kind of, let me end on a silver lining. Yeah, conversely, don't let the fear of liability drive decision-making, you know? If you know that you're making the right decision through a fair and defensible process, you're in the appropriate standards and criteria, then don't stray the course. You know, if you have to deny that conditional use permit and the applicant saying, you know, counsel, if you do that, I'm going to sue each and every one of you individually. If we knew we're doing the right thing under copulpatio, that's what these protections are for. And they'll protect you against that kind of stuff. All right, the next slide. Here's just a couple of thoughts on avoiding concerns around this area. As I mentioned, just understand the job description and stay within it. Where I look, where, how do I know what my job description is as a council member, right? But at this forty thousand foot level, the council is the legislative and corporate authority. Your role in the organizational chart is the big picture, policy and governance. We'll break that down more in a minute. And in a municipal form of government, there truly is this distinction between policy and administration. I know that Leadville is actually one of only two or three statutory cities organized under Article Four, Part One of the state statutes. But as I understand it, you've kind of moved to this council administrator form of government, right? Yes, the mayor has prerogatives as the presiding officer and has certain chief executive officer functions under the statute, but you're really in practice, as I understand it, a council administrator form of government. That means that you want to focus your efforts and energy on the broad governance and policymaking, legislative affairs of the organization and your city administrator under your code is responsible for the day-to-day operations and the functioning of the city departments. And is your resource and your point of contact. Use your administrator as your resource and your point of contact. We'll talk about the conclusion every minute in a second. So it's important to understand what our role is, as important as, you know, understanding what authority has been given away to others, whether it's by ordinance or statute. You know, like all the election stuff, clerk, I can see you back there smiling, all the election stuff has been given away to the clerk, right? So when the clerk, you know, somebody files a petition to run for office and the petition is insufficient, within whose scope of employment, within whose job duties is it to make that decision? She's raising her hand. I love doing that, right? I love all that risk.
After complication, you're.
But not, but not the elected officials, right? Conversely, it runs the other direction. Within whose scope of employment is it to decide whether or not, you know, this municipality has a short-term rental ordinance at all? You all. Or to decide whether or not this organization incurs debt? It's either you or the citizens, right? Or whether or not we buy or sell a piece of city property? You all. Whether we approve a contract over the administrator's purchasing order? You all. So that allocation is there. It serves you to free up your time for the big picture stuff. And it protects you as long as everyone's staying, and it protects you this way. Once in a while, the overzealous plaintiffs' attorneys, particularly on employment cases, they may try to pull in an elected official. But if I can hold up the org chart and it says, or the administrator's job description and it says, you know, the administrator is the person who has the authority to make this decision on this personnel issue and plaintiff, assuming you have no evidence that any elected official was involved in this matter, then they are not a part of the party for this case. And that's our protection. And it can show people that, hey, that's not part of their job description. So you can't pull them into this claim. All right, next slide.
I have one question about that. Would setting, I mean, maybe this is more of an internal question, but would setting goals for departments fall under something that the city would do or, sorry, us council members could do? Let's say, for example, we got an exorbitant amount of complaints about a certain department. Would setting a goal for a department then fall strictly under executive director or whoever? Or would it be like something that the council could take up?
Yeah. So I think your code provision on the administrator says it's the administrative responsibility for the functioning of the departments.
Right.
So if you're getting that, who's your first point of contact for the discussion?
Then we would just go straight, okay.
Yeah, and then, you know, our obligation is to come up with, have a good and discuss that, a plan, how we're going to attack that, but we also won't respect the conversation the other way. If citizens are coming to you complaining about personnel in some department, yeah, you might need to unburden yourself of that and tell the administrator, and that's what I would suggest you do. But I respect the response if she says, I got it. We'll take care of it. I'll get together with the department head and we'll make sure it's handled. If you keep hearing the complaints, then she's going to be attentive to that and know that she's going to maybe some more things to do. Give an example, or linear example. I think your code, for example, says council's obligation is to ultimately adopt the personnel policies.
Right.
But the administrator implements that. The councils, within their scope of employment, is the decision of whether or not to create or eliminate positions. That's the administrator and department and the supervisors that decide whether or not to discipline or separate an individual employee. That kind of thing, okay? Yeah, and goals, the framing types of issues that might come in from council is, you know, it's one thing to say, well, our priority as a council is for next year's budget where we'd like you to look at the opportunity for more ATs and street maintenance. Right? Because that's where we'd like to prioritize our efforts, right? And we could see that's wholly different than, hey, you know, what's going on with employee streets, right? So there's this separation there. I don't know where the exact line lies in how you've talked about goals, but I would encourage you to stick with goals in terms of broad resources. And, you know, council is there to empower, resource, and champion the organization in terms of resource allocation. This slide talks about that a little bit, right? In terms of the hierarchical, by the way, if you like the concepts on this page, there's a book by John, some of this is borrowed from an author named John Carver, Boards That Make a Difference, and it talks about how in the policy administrative form of organizational structures, not that we're silos, we're mutually supportive, that we understand where responsibilities allocated to governing body that, you know, is at the top of the pyramid, looking at ownership and governance issues. Ownership is that idea of, you know, talking to the owners of our corporation, helping identify needs and wants of the owners, the citizen. But your administrator and her team is dealing with issues at management and supervision. That means probably the most important kind of documents for you all are the longer-term documents. Comp plan, annual budget, capital needs of the organization, thinking about where we want this community and organization to be in three, five, 10 years, right? And that's, you know, your unique niche and be selfish about creating time for them. Yeah, you can get pulled into meeting by meeting, dealing with issues as they come up, right? Do you want to set broader goals for yourself as a council, tackling the broad, forward-looking vision for the organization rather than just reacting to day-to-day stuff? So you deal with the appointment and supervision of your director force, corporate matters that are reserved to you, purchasing issues that are in your strata or tranche, I guess, general ordinances, but look in terms of having the broadest interest in mind and working together in that fiduciary role to protect the organization. All right, next slide. Just a couple others. In terms of just straight-up liability protection, there is safety in numbers, I think Hillary will agree with me. But there are a lot of additional legal privileges when you get together and act as a group. And in fact, that's where, yes, there is this outside the meeting where you're ambassador of the organization, right? But you, the law requires you take any action in a public meeting and you are better protected when it's clear you're acting together as a council in the council chambers. There are legislative privileges that apply and so on and so forth. And though each and every one of us brings our own voice, it really is the fact that being on a multi-member governing body is a we job. We each bring our own perspectives and, you know, fight like that for your perspective, but we're working towards the we, what is the voice of the council. So we don't want to frame our actions in terms of I, you know. The claims, I admittedly, I'm on the tail end of bad stuff, right? But it's, you know, hey, the heck with you alls, council, I don't care what your decision was, I'm going to do this. That's a red flag. Another red flag, maybe it's more nuanced, but it's a wise council that has its intent out for this because it may not create a third-party liability risk. But if you have a dynamic during council reports, you know, and somebody says, mayor, yeah, I've got something to report. Since our last meeting, I did this, right? And everyone's eyes open. You know, that may not create any risk to third parties, but it's a wise council that kind of has common understanding of what are our expectations and norms about how we represent and advocate for the council in between meetings. And I say it only because I want people to be protected. You're busy enough. Right? But if one of us on the body says, yeah, I'll volunteer, you know, who in council wants to go and liaison with the county? Might be the mayor, right? But are we clear enough in what the direction is, what the expectation is, right? So when the member comes back and says, I did this on our behalf, then we're all feel protected, right? Oh, and by the way, don't let that other party, you know, conscript you into, you know, playing your card before council wants to. I know how it is, sometimes you go, I don't know if you have a district or county or some other group, you know how it is, you might volunteer to go to their meeting and they say, what's the council? What's Leadville City Council's position on this? And you go, I don't know, we haven't talked about it with council. You have every right to push back. You know, they may be urgent from their perspective, but hey, you know, in terms of building the power of council, you have every right to tell them, hey. you know, in terms of building the power of council, you have every right to tell them, hey, sorry, Mr. One. Sorry, it's a fire drill for you all, but our council, we want to get on the same page before you even tell you what our position is. Okay, next slide. Last piece of this is there are, um, some personal commitments, I guess, uh, in terms of building the strength of the council. Does require some personal sacrifices once in a while, things like setting aside a personal agenda when there's lack of support. You know, I mean, you may even be thinking, I ran for office and I got elected on the platform that we're going to have a, an ordinance that prohibits for comrades. You know, if I can't find three or more members to come along, I have to be willing to shell that personal interest in view of the service of the work plan and goals that the council has identified by the council. Do you have to put votes every once in a while, Mayor?
Not, not often, but we do.
Yeah, what about that? You know, when you're on a four, you got a four-three vote, what do you think about this? Is it okay to go back to your people and tell them, I didn't vote for that one?
Well, I should be able to read it in the record.
I'm just being, you know, I'm just being straight, you know. It's hard for me to tell me what you tell your people. You can tell them anything you want. But as you just mentioned, they're going to know what you voted, okay? But, you know, would, would the dynamic be different would be making the council stronger as an institution? If the conversation were, yeah, I didn't vote for that one, but you know what? We had a, you know, we had a good discussion around that issue as council, heard a lot of different perspectives. I thought like heck to my point of view, that the council ultimately decided to go a different direction. And I respect the decision of council, because we're all going to learn in something, so, right? It does have a risk dynamic. You certainly, you don't have to be the main cheerleader. But you definitely, as a fiduciary, cannot affirmatively go out and attempt to undo the decision. You know, I'll give you a good real-life example. It's a little bit extreme, but it had a controversial development. It was a four-three vote. Council, after much wrangling, decided to approve it four to three. With one of the key issues being, they added a condition of approval that said, we'll approve it as long as you go to the neighbor and get an easement for a secondary access. Oh, okay, they voted on their approval. But one of the people on the three side decided after the vote to go to the neighbor. Yeah, okay, not for that stick. Yeah, maybe try to convince them not to grant the easement. Well, they were just on the body that said, created the expectation that you have the right to proceed with this project if you satisfy that condition. That kind of border on the potential importance interference with business relations, right? So that, it can have that extreme effect, but again, it's just those things that make council stronger. I think sometimes those are personal sacrifices that are worth making. Because it is a train. We want to make the train stronger during the time we're on. Okay, next slide. The last piece on this is to recognize that adherence to organizational structure is totally important in the area of employee relations and administrative matters delegated to staff. I've covered a, a piece of this, but as the council, we all recognize that we're not employee supervisors, right? Except for your direct reports and except for the mayor's. I know there's a provision in your code that says, I forget the exact language, but the administrator has a relationship with the mayor for some more day-to-day kind of oversight, right? But other than that, right, the elected officials are not supervisors of line employees. From a risk management perspective, you'll want to love that. That's wonderful, because employment practice of liability risks, you know, they're tough to keep up for people who do this as a full-time job, right? And so you want to stay away from that temptation. You actually have a provision in your charter that embodies this concept that says, you know, except for inquiry, the, the mayor and a member of councils deal with the administrative service of the city through the city administrator. Right? And that you don't give orders to subordinates of the city administrator. We're a small community. We could be collegial and say hi to people, right? But if we want something done or we have a concern, who's our point of contact? Who's our resource? The administrator. You want to keep her in the loop on that and use that as your point of contact. I will tell you that you may be friendly with line employees, but look at it from their perspective. Now, if they have a council member who comes to there, I hope so in this case, but that's okay. Scared, you know? But it's more likely that they're wondering, well, what am I supposed to do with this information now, right? And that's why this system is set up under your code for the administrator there. She may be doing some work to figure out what council's preferences and priorities are. And then she's responsible for dispersing that, right, and getting the work done, then consistent with your direction, okay? Your direct reports are probably the administrator, the attorney, the judge. And that's probably, is that it? Okay, I remember correctly, the clerk's elected?
Well, elected position, but no one ran so appointed technically.
Okay, in treasurer, yeah, okay. Um, now conversely, you do want to commit to speak with one voice to your administrator. By that, I don't, you know, it has to be a seven oh vote, but you have to agree to give council direction with the voice of council, the we voice. I know it can be a little murky sometimes, maybe the mayor, we've had a nice discussion. And the mayor says, let's, let's give Lori some direction. We go around and die, say, one idea, another idea. Before we know it, you get seven different ideas of what the direction ought to be. That's when we turn to Lori and say, I got your direction. But who owns it? Who owns it? You all own that issue and you want to. Because when you speak with one voice, even if it's by a, you may have to put it to a vote to give clear direction. That's where you get credibility in what your direction is, and that's where you get accountability. The administrators and managers will tell you they are accountable to the voice of the council as a council. And that's true. You want to be careful of that dynamic, because I've seen it break down back when I was a town attorney. I would see it break down where people would, you know, after that murky discussion, they'd go to the manager's office. Couple of days later, you'd say, hey, you know, that was kind of a messy discussion the other night, but, uh, here's what I want you to do, right? Is that strengthening the we? Would you be surprised that somebody who had a different view than you, a hundred and eighty-degree view of what the direction ought to be were doing that? So the mayors in their wisdom and dark arts that they practice will see these issues arise, right? They go, well, we're not going to get this done tonight, but let's commit to bring it back at the next workstation. So that our staff has clear direction, Lori has clear direction on what we want from staff. And that's a great place to be, because it's going to make you stronger if you handle those issues, uh, that way. Yeah, it doesn't mean you can't, you know, and maybe have one-on-one meetings or two-at-a-time meetings with your administrator so she can get better understanding of your own priorities, right? That's all well and good, right? But when the rubber hits the road and looking for the direction of the council as a council, then you on that issue of figuring out your own priorities and, you know, working that amongst yourselves. All right, next slide. Let's talk about ethics just a little bit, uh, just to get this on your radar and be respectful with your time. Uh, you are now, right, as elected official here, you don't have a local code of ethics. So you're, you're subject to the state standard of conduct, which is the state code of ethics. Who agrees with this notion? Code of ethics, like, seem like they're in some faraway place. And they're written in legalese. You know, both those things are true. But what I would suggest you do is find a good resource. Staff can help you. CML's got a nice little publication on the state code of ethics. Whatever it takes to get a good working familiarity with what the rules are. Because that's going to help protect you, because you'll be able to spot issues before they arise. Which is a lot better place to be than being in the middle of some allegation of a ethical transgression and then it's too late, right? Um, so look for a resource on, on that issue, right? And become familiar with it. Note for the new folks, you know, you're not alone. The, the attorney and the administrator are not your own personal ethics advisors, but there are no silly questions in this area. You know, if you're struggling to understand, is it, would this be a conflict of interest? What do I need to do here? They're versed in these issues and they navigate these things. Their input's going to be from the perspective of their roles, the town attorney and the city attorney, so he's running the city administrator. They can still give you thoughts, right, on those issues. Couple of issues to keep in mind, conflicts of interest, right? We all know what kind of what that is. Um, by the way, my thoughts here come, come off of one of the handouts. I, I guess I'm proud of it. Maybe that shouldn't be, but I did a little one-page handout. Just summarizing, some of the key rules under the state code of ethics, which was no easy feat, because the statute goes on for fifteen or twenty pages. So you don't use this as a substitute for getting familiar with the actual language. But just recognize, like, in a conflict of interest, we all know what that is. If some action that we're going to take as a council is going to directly and substantially affect my own personal financial interest, then I have an obligation to disclose my conflict of interest, not vote on the council matter and not attempt to influence the remaining members of council, right? So if I own property in town and I want to ask council for approval of a subdivision, yeah, I have a right to pursue an application of my own property. But when that issue comes up, like at the beginning, Mayor, I need to make a disclosure. I have a conflict of interest. I may have to step away, not participate in the discussion of a.
Could you just briefly, um, because I know it's, it's fairly clear, like, when you have a financial interest, but several of us are on local nonprofits or other groups. And so the question comes up of if that group presents or requests something from council, but we don't, we are partners on that board, but we don't have a financial benefit from it, what's, how do we navigate that?
Yeah, so, um, look to Hillary and Lori for additional information. Um, but this was a mystery I had for many years. I was always struggling with this question. The state statute was amended four or five years ago to say that if the only relationship that exists is being voted on the governing body of the municipality and being on the board of directors of a nonprofit, then that in and of itself is not a conflict of interest. Now, on the other hand, if there's more going on there, such that maybe the elected official is a compensated employee of the nonprofit or receives services directly from that nonprofit, then that can give rise to a conflict of interest. But in the absence of a local rule, the dual membership in and of itself would not be deemed under the statute to be a conflict of interest.
If that nonprofit is requesting money from the municipality and the council votes?
Well, there may be a perception there.
Okay.
Yeah, and, uh, different municipal attorneys have different views on whether that money in the earnings of the nonprofit does create a financial connection, okay? So check with Hillary on that as well. Um, and remember also that even if you clear the issue of actual conflict.
Reception.
There are a disorder, fair, unfair, right? In the world of ethics, perception equals reality and reality equals perception sometimes, right? So whatever that looks like to you, you know, I, as an attorney, I have to tell you, yeah, there are not always a bright light. And that's why you have to give your attorney some grace when you ask a question and the answer is, it depends, right? You know, um, but if you can be on the right side with the, of the legal question, there'll still be a perception. So there's some curative power in a disclosure. You know, even if you don't have any financial connection, if the liquor applicant happens to be a friend or acquaintance, you know, everybody knows that, but why is that councilwoman up there? I thought they were buddies with the other. You know, hey, you can make a disclaimer, hey, Mayor, before we start this hearing, I just want to clear something up. You know, there's been a suggestion that I have a conflict. I just want to make it clear that I have no financial connection to the applicant. Yes, we were college roommates back in the day. But I intend to consider this application, right, the same as any other. And you got to walk the walk. But making that disclosure, I think, is helpful as long as we can walk the walk.
Okay, thank you.
Any other thoughts on our complex of interests? All right, there's more on the handout about the revenue interest and so on. Confidential information, right, there's an ethical rule on that, and then gifts. Um, we have actually a constitutional amendment, Amendment Forty-One, that sets rules for gifts by elected officials. Colorado, so here's another thing that I, maybe I shouldn't be proud of, but I am. I boiled it down to two sentences. Don't accept any gift from any one person in any one year of more than seventy-five dollars if it's in any way connected to your status as a public official. Subject to one huge caveat, don't accept the gift no matter what its value. If it's clear or a reasonable person, the gift is being offered to curry your favor, influence you on some action that you're going to take as an elected official or reward you for some action. Or a reasonable person would conclude that gift is being given to try and get them to depart from the faithful and impartial discharge of their duties as a government official. That's a lot of litmus. Yeah. So much my gifts is just timing and context, right? Yeah, we're all collegial friends and we have friends and we may even have friends who are business, people in the community, right? And we have Christmas dinner with them. But if they have a liquor application on next week's agenda, this is not the week. To be accepting tickets to the Rockies, which aren't worth anything near seventy-five bucks. But there's still that other issue going on because of timing and context. So a lot of exceptions and a lot more guidance about gifts that you can find in various articles and handbooks and so on. But just keep it on your radar as well. And remember that deception reality, the subject is pretty important as well. All right, next slide. Last thing I want to get on your radar is to reach back and talk about, we talked earlier about deliberations. Talk a little bit more about due process. Oh, I wanted also, on conflicts, wanted to bring your, your attention that there's a distinction between conflicts of interest and abstention. Right? So you can't abstain from a vote, um, based on conflict of interest. And what you're doing there is implicating the state statute. If you're abstaining and you don't have a conflict of interest, then that's by guided by statutory stuff, right? So just so you know, we have members that some, that have rules that say you're required to vote unless you have a legal obligation to refuse yourself and some that don't. So whatever that looks like to you, right? And I don't know if Bob's rule speaks to that. I think if you doubt Bob's rules, I think it says or suggests that in the absence of a conflict of interest, members are obligated to vote on any issue coming before the body. So if you're thinking about doubting Bob's rules, you want to think about whether you want to keep that rule, modify it, maintain it, whatever that may look like to you.
The one time that comes up, I think, the most frequently is minutes. Someone will say, why wasn't that that meeting? So I'm going to abstain. You can still read the minutes. Uh, there's no legal conflict of interest for you to have to abstain from. You do not have to abstain from voting on the minutes because you weren't at the meeting. You can read the minutes, you can, probably should read the minutes, you know what this is. But, and you can vote, even if you weren't at the meeting. So sometimes people are like, ah, wasn't there abstaining? And that's, that's where those come in.
Yeah, it's a routine business item. You can vote on the minutes. And, um, so we're finding that, so our risk issue is people want to relay minutes. Not minutes or minutes, they're a reflection of what was discussed or transpired. You, you have to decide, not a legal issue, you have to decide what level of minutes you want. I mean, there's a distinction between action minutes, which is before the action taken. Then I have some members who want detailed minutes of every discussion that occurred. Those minutes are eighteen pages long and they're, make a nice historical record. But if they don't have the resources to do that, then you can't do it. And so a lot of municipalities either have action minutes or lay it somewhere, action, action plus. Just a little bit of summary of the discussion. So you have to decide as a council, you know, what you want to have and what you want to resource.
Or action plus.
Action plus, action plus. All right, let's talk about due process real quickly and thanks for the earlier questions. So you absolutely fascinating thing about being elected official is you get to wear different hats. A lot of the work you do is as a legislator. You know, I think in terms of legislation, we're making general policy. There's no applicant in front of us. We're just making broad policies that apply to no one in particular, and they apply somewhere down the road. Good example of that is like your general short-term rental ordinance. Sorry to keep using that example, but there was no applicant in front of you, where you just set in general rules. And in that context, you can vote yes or no for the SDR ordinance because you love or hate SDRs. You can lobby people and people can come to you and talk to you about their concerns around that piece of legislation. And you could do your own research and you can vote yes or no based on your own personal policy views. But when you're in this quasi-fiducial mode, when you're making decisions that affect individuals' protected property rights, whole different dynamic applies and a whole different set of rules apply. And they go, well, why is that? Well, let's think about the broader question. In Colorado, luckily, I think, right, I know, we want local control of land use and we have that power, right? And so for things like land use and liquor licensing, we want local control. And at the end of the day, only seven people get to make those decisions. About how, you know, can this person subdivide or re-own their property or develop? But with that power, when we're talking about people's protected property, this goes the obligation to make sure we honor their due process rights. And it all sounds a little mysterious, but it all, you know, if we just remember where it comes from. No person shall be deprived of land, liberty, or property without due process of law. So at the local government level, right, we're the guardians of due process and we're the ones accountable for whether or not we honor people's due process rights. So it's completely different from legislation, because in this context, you're more like a judge. And it looks different, you know, because we give more notice, right, to the land. That explains when you have a liquor license, that explains that big sign in the window, right? Because that's the extra notice to make sure we're honoring people's due process. Right? Because that's the extra notice to make sure we're honoring people's due process. And we have a mini trial. We have an evidentiary hearing in front of council. Kind of like what judges do. And in this context, we're obligated by the constitution and by our own ordinances to make a decision based on the evidence presented to us as the judges at the hearing. And the decision has to be guided by pre-existing legal criteria that are either in our code or state statute. So you can see how it requires, as we said, our personal preferences aside, that we remain fair and impartial, just like a judge. Okay? There's a link here to some training resources around these issues that may be of interest to you, but let's go to the next slide. And I'll just give you some tips on the biggest issues that we see. So as the judge, right, you have to remain detached, neutral, impartial, and not get involved in these applications outside of your hearing. Okay? And that's kind of a lonely part of the job. Because we know what happens. Is a controversial development coming up? What's the natural inclination of the citizen? I want to talk to my council member and tell them why they have to vote yes or no, right? But we can't do that as the judge. It's just like a judge in a, in a regular civil proceeding. We have to tell folks, it's not that I don't want to hear from you, but to be fair to the applicant and to everybody else, I can only engage with you during our hearing. Right? And a good way to frame that and getting the citizens to understand that piece is just to remind them that when I come in and say, you ought to vote no against that subdivision. Can I talk to you, councilman, and tell you why you should vote no? You say, well, no, I can't talk to you now about that. Look at it this way, dear citizen, would it seem fair to you if it were your application? Right? And I, as the decision maker, was being lobbied by people against, you know, your application, and you didn't get a chance to hear what they were saying or react to what they were saying. So it's all in view of this evidentiary hearing where everybody gets a fair shake to hear everybody else's reasons why you ought to vote yes or no. Right? So you need to wait until the matter's ripe. That includes even things like, you don't want to go to the planning commission hearing. Right? Let's give them the freedom to do their piece and make their recommendation. It'll be ripe for you, for the seven of you. Wow, awesome power, right? But let it ripen and only get engaged at your public hearing. Make sure we stay neutral. You don't want to be making prejudicial pre-hearing statements. I'll give you a fun example of that. Do you have marijuana dispensary? Was that by council ordinance or was it by initiative?
Or not.
Okay. One of some members at Salsa where the policy view of the elected officials was we don't want marijuana dispensaries, so they passed an ordinance that prohibited them. And then by initiative, it got approved. So now it's no longer a policy question. It was like a regulatory question now and who's going to vote yes or no on these applications? For new dispensers? And so sometimes the elected officials would say, when a reporter came to them, they would say, well, you know, it's a policy matter. I was never in favor of marijuana dispensaries, so I will never vote in favor of a marijuana dispensary in this town. Does that sound like a fair and impartial judge of a regulatory application? No. All right. So another fun lesson, I had a, a member in a mountain community where one of the decision makers on a controversial development, it was a very controversial application. They had three or four sections of the public hearing at the, at the council level. This council member had a, had a local radio show.
How could that go wrong?
How could that go wrong? Can't go wrong.
Imagine.
Where this is. Yeah. So what was the topic of the radio show discussion where people could call in and engage with the selected official about this controversial development? Good idea. Does that sound like a fair and impartial judge? So, yeah. And my, of course, our problem from an evidentiary standpoint, this is all occurring on the public airwaves. So the, the evidence of lack of impartiality was more than in plain view, right? So just be careful about that piece. I know that people want to get to you, you know? But it's our obligation, right, to tell them we, we can't do that. And it's not that we're trying to be difficult, we're just trying to be fair, right? Um, and so that ties into the concept of, the other fancy word that I paid too much tuition to is you have to avoid ex parte communications. That just simply means outside the hearing communications with people. So staff can help you, have the tools to just, you know, defer those discussions with people. If it's coming in by email, you can just send that to staff. They can run interference for you. They can get back to that citizen and say, you know, thanks for your email to councilmember Smith, but you know, responding to let you know that as the council members who make the decision, they can't engage at the outside of hearing, but we will include your email in the, in the record so that everybody can see. And they can, you know, they'll get a chance to read and talk about your email if they want to during the public, public hearing. Okay? Last piece, we've already hit on deliberations. We love it at Salsa when you have a deliberation on the record about, about these kinds of issues. Any questions about this stuff, quasi adhesion? It's a pretty foreign kind of thing. Um, but as you get more and more into it, um, you'll see the distinctions between the two. And staff can give you a heads up. Now, if you look at, I think I saw on one of your packets, you have advanced agendas. You know, you could print the calendar and what's coming up. Staff, if you want, they could probably tell you, these are the planning, quasi judicial planning and public hearing matters that we have coming up, and that can help get it on your radar. When somebody catches you at the grocery store. Hey, can I tell you about the new, I talked to you about the new hotel and restaurant? It's gonna open and why they shouldn't get a liquor license.
Right, so our planning director includes that in his department report.
Yeah.
Upcoming, you know, pending applications, things that are on the radar.
Cool. Yeah, good spot to you. All right, I'll just kind of wrap things up with one, get out of the weeds a little bit here. Next slide. And, um, that's just a suggestion of, you know, doing what you already do, you know, and that's embracing wise leadership. Um, as a council, in my five years at Salsa, I've kind of learned the hard way that there's some things about risk management that we definitely can't fully control, you know, like what the judges are going to do, what claimants are going to do, what the legislature might do, uh, that kind of thing. But, you know, embracing wise leadership in the areas that you can control and that you can manage real well as a council, that's going to help ensure your success and reduce your risk. Internally, it includes things like, you know, committing to the no surprises approach. You know, definitely meetings are not to have like surprise moments or gotcha moments. Definitely not to have staff bashing. You know, again, imagine how powerful it is in the face of a citizen comment if you make that comment, hey, let's, we don't do that either. You know, even if you have a concern, Laura is your point of communication if you have a concern, not hearing that stuff in other meetings. Um, committing to effectively deal with this story. We may not, we may end up having to agree to disagree, but we can have disagreements without being disagreeable. Maybe if it's a four-three vote, you know, we're committed to, okay, we decided that, oh, it's merit, so let's move on to the next one. And not letting it drive how we do our business. Um, I added this next bullet because, you know, you can tell me, let me hear whether you agree or disagree with me, but when I read the popular press, we tend to see, and particularly social media, we tend to hear negative things about local government. I think part of calibrating public attitudes and ultimately even calibrating public attitudes towards potential, potential jury pools is is letting people know about the great things within, in local government as the ambassadors of the organization. And I encourage you to tout your successes as a council and as an organization, tout the great successes that staff is achieving on your behalf. And that helps calibrate this whole arena. And shows, you know, builds faith and trust that you're getting great things done because that other stuff, you can try to ground out the good things that you're doing. Um, and finally, just look at it with a lens of committing to the service of the city as an entity and to the governing bodies and institution, embracing those, you know, they have those legal underpinnings, embracing that fiduciary aspect as well as your role as stewards and the we responsibilities of doing that. With that, I'll stop. I'll look it up. For any questions you have, there's some additional resource materials on the slides that you can look at. Anything more about Salsa? I'd happy to take any questions or assist with anything that you have to bounce out of Salsa. And we're always always open to suggestions from our members on ways we can include and help. And in that spirit of, you know, being eyes out if there's something that's Salsa that was not doing right, you, you, let me hear about that.
I love these one-page change ads.
Yeah.
Very useful, very helpful.
Stay proud of us.
Yes.
I would encourage everybody to, to check out Salsa's website. They actually have, you know, like other questions that other councils have submitted and, you know, little briefs. I know I've looked up some of the can I be on this nonprofit? And it's, there's a, just a wealth of information to scope around on their, on their site.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you.
Lori, how often are you at a decision finding, you'll maybe consult with Salsa? Like, is that something you do sometimes?
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I mean, definitely Sam has helped us out on, uh, some employee situations and uh, oftentimes I think there are resources where as far as risk management, you know, proactive things that we can do as far as, uh, I mean, I think, well, I think this is a little bit before you were back on the council, but we have been working really hard on our checklist. So that when we did our insurance audit, we would be proactive with regard to employee training. So for everything from safety practices to our streets department, to any of our first responders, to just general are every, is everything okay in the workplace? Um, so I think they have a lot of really good suggestions. I think one of the things that got us to do is have the fire marshal come in and, uh, look at the entire building here in the city hall. And we've implemented, around to say, probably ninety percent of the recommendations to just, uh, reduce the risk of fire here. And, uh, you know, like upstairs, um, we didn't have a, a viable exit for a lot of offices. Um, which, I mean, we have an exit, but it's not viable.
We saw the fire escape.
Yeah, yeah. It's, um, so, so we've got ladders. Yeah, it's, uh, it, it's, it's more like, it's more scary than it is.
Yeah. It's a sturdy ladder.
Yeah. But so things like that where, you know, we'll consult with Salsa and help them advise on, you know, everything from reactive situations to proactive situations. So it's, they've been a fantastic partner. And as you can see, a lot of this is, uh, I think uh, stuff that unfortunately Sam has been through before. And I guess I just want to say that the last piece of it is that now you get a better sense that sometimes when things are the way they are, it isn't to be difficult. And now you're sort of equipped with the training from Hillary and then Sam to know like, okay, here's the, the process and it's, and it's sometimes uncomfortable or sometimes not the easiest way to get business done. But my ultimate thing is, and now you know, I have heard burn over some things, is as a member of the public, you want to know what your government is doing. And so if things are properly agendized and conversations happen in public, it's harder, it's not as efficient, you know? Wouldn't it just be easier if we can, three of us can just talk and we just, you know? That's not, that's not serving the public. Thank you.
Thank you so much for coming all the way up here. She's always very helpful to have these.
Always very good in that of the metronome. We'll never build enough free time with you. One of these times I'll spend some more sales tax dollars. I know my staff, um, the folks at Salsa, sometimes when they, you know, they go, go to Mizuza.
Oh, Melazon.
Melazon. They said, go there and here's some money. I want you to get me one. And I know there's limitations in my event. So in our offices, there's that buzz, you know, and when is somebody going up to Leadville because they need to pick up some stuff there. And I'd love to stay for, for some of your events here, wonderful events, world renowned events.
What we can do is we can have you come up again in July when you actually get an appointment at Melazon to go to shops. Come up again in six months.
Just gotta check the website because there's cancellations.
I'm not coming up at pace anybody in a race. I know that.
But I got one last week because there had been a cancellation. There were two days last week with lots of open appointments. So just gotta keep checking.
But yeah, if you walk in for an appointment right now, you're running, it was September, now it's early November.
Yeah.
All right.
Thanks, Gary.
Thank you so much. I'd like to just take a really quick break. I know we have one more brief presentation and it's, it's already a late night and let's stretch. Uh, last is a presentation with Christian and Jaffe Wheeler here, just giving us a background of the steps that brought us to our, the formation of our regional housing authority and, um, that was a big busy time. Christian, please take it away.
Yeah, um, so as Mayor mentioned, I will only be covering the history of, I won't be going too much into detail as to what's happened in present day. I just kind of want to fully recap um, how it is that we are. And to start, I mean, the biggest question is what is the Leadville County Regional Housing Authority, right? Well, a regional housing, this authority specifically is a multi-jurisdictional housing authority between, uh, Lake County and Leadville governments, which was established via IGA. I included to you all in the email, the IGA that established the regional housing authority. Um, now named the Leadville County Regional Housing Authority. Um, so, I mean, what even is the regional housing authority? So a regional housing authority is a government-owned business. Uh, that is an important distinction and its purpose typically is to perform housing program management and often development on behalf of a municipality, county, or region. In this case, it is a region because it is shared between two separate governmental entities, that being Lake County and Leadville. So, um, we also do have a Leadville Housing Authority, um, which is beholden specifically to Leadville. But this one specifically is a multi-jurisdictional authority rather than a singular um, authority under Leadville, which gives it that, uh, government-owned business, um, entities status. Also refer Leadville Housing Authority, but regardless. Why specifically, uh, multi-jurisdictional housing authority? There's a lot of benefits to multi-jurisdictional housing authorities. This isn't an expansive list, but it certainly is one, some of the more compelling things. Um, first thing, it allows us to let it know. Um, we did establish specifically one under, uh, the IGA. However, legally you could go up to five, um, through count, or through state statute, um, if that wasn't included in the IGA, though it was, so we're only up to one. Um, and also it enables you to establish a sales tax and/or a use, um, tax for up to one percent. Um, and that, both of those apply to, uh, Leadville and Lake County. So it's not just a Leadville tax, it's not just a Lake County tax, it is a Leadville and Lake County tax, which is not typically how things, um, work unless we happen to do it coinciding them. So this is specifically both of them without it having to pass through both entities. That also opens up the door for some development, uh, development impact fees specific to housing. So there's development impact fees for a lot of things. This is specifically for housing as long as we pass one or the other of the tax um, requirements. Now, both of those tax requirements do have to go through a vote of the people, uh, through table of course. So, uh, regardless if the authority purports to, uh, say utilize all one percent of the sales tax, it still has to go to a vote for the people to be accrued.
Also, those just, look, those numbers can't change.
Yeah.
The one now and the one percent, that's a permanent thing.
And that is not the same thing as the accommodations tax.
That is not the same thing. Um.
How long is the IGA stand for? Is it renewed annually or is it like a multi-year IGA?
That is a good question.
It should be renewed.
Renewed annually?
Does it automatically mean?
It does have an automatic condition.
Uh, to both of your points, we have one though currently, we have the ability to have up to five. But we only have one and that can't change. So we decided on one and it'll always be one and it'll never change.
We decided on one.
Okay.
Unless we were to completely remove the IGA, uh, currently we are sitting at one.
Okay, and, and that is the cap.
That is the cap, yeah. And this has to pass through super majority of the thing, which is its own rules that you can read in the IGA. Um, yeah. So another big benefit is, uh, it's exempt from property. So another big benefit is, uh, it's exempt from property taxes, um, to state or subdivisions. Um, a perfect example of this is, um, we own a portion of the Chayke Housing Trust Development. Uh, that allows it to be affordable for people buying it because we have the ability to dictate whether or not it is tax exempt. It doesn't have to be. Uh, not everything owned by us has to be tax exempt. Uh, I think we have to apply it to that. Uh, we had the IGA agreement with Chayke Housing Trust with a group that friends. Um, and please anyone step in correcting my wrong or mispeak on any of this, uh, that I'm covering. Um, it allows us to condemn property for public use if not, which everything is home here, but, um, legally speaking, a housing authority can't do that, but that doesn't really apply too much to our situation because of ours title chip is a massive blank, as you all know, um.
You're shaking your head.
We're, we're, um, so it was that the group decided that we were not allowed to go after condemnation. So that's not a power that the authority has.
Was that in the IGA? Okay. I remember, uh, I guess I must have missed that. Typically, regional housing authorities can, unless I guess expressed otherwise in the IGA. Um, authority specific grants, uh, loans or contributions. Um, so there are specific loans or grants that will be only offered to housing authorities. And having a housing authority opens the door to, of course, access those. Also strengthens any grant applications for any housing related things as it shows that we have a clear cooperative, uh, um, working entity, um, that is doing housing work. So of course, it's always going to bolster any, um, application towards, uh, housing as long as the housing authority is up for it, of course. Um, it can, um, if we were debruised, uh, borrowing the legal terms. Debruising is a process in which very complicated, but, uh, the short end of it is allow us to use money a little bit more freely, um, outside of what table current restrictions are. Um, there are a lot more to it. Definitely when you're doing research and not just taking, what I say is to what debruising means if you have genuine questions about it, but generally speaking, it's just going to allow us to have other incomes, um, that we cannot have without debruising.
This was speak today a little bit. Oh, so currently we are not allowed to make more than a certain percentage of our operational budget.
Was that what's the six A was meant to step around?
That's what debru, that's what debruising will eliminate. So then we can go after these big grantments and rent and it's in collectment and things like that. The county has been boosted. So currently all the grants and all that stuff are going through the county as county as the applicant.
I see.
We will touch on that, do that, do it that way until you can get the voters to debruise the housing authority. Yeah.
Can you bring that back to the ballot this coming year?
We are going to bring it back to the ballot.
Yeah, and I'll touch a bit on that later, um, once we, uh, touch on the, as to projects we're doing. Uh, court requests specifically, um, with personal information and individuals. So it's been specifically with the restrictions of a government entity does it. Uh, those were, the deeds are open to court requests, meaning personal information, very sensitive personal information sometimes is open to the public potentially, or, um, whereas in this entity it's not. Please talk to a lawyer to explain to you how that works. I'm not aware, but that is how it operates. Ease of selling, exchanging, transferring, assigning or pledging property to any, to any person, firm, corporation, the city or the county or governments. Essentially, ease of, uh, transaction. Um, and of course, uh, and probably most importantly, it runs programs. Ideally, this is a place that runs programs. So those are a lot of reasons as to why the regional housing authority exists and kind of what the purpose of it is, um, in large aspects. Um, of course, ours, we try to make it fit for our community and tackle different projects that maybe others do. We have certain restrictions such as a mil to one, to one mil instead of five because of our current situations and stuff, but that's just kind of generally how and why, uh, multi-jurisdictional housing authorities exist. Um, is there any questions before I get to the history of how we actually ended up with a multi-jurisdictional housing authority? So moving forward, um, this all started, uh, of course, the work of this started a little bit before twenty eighteen, but, um, it came to fruition most in twenty eighteen when the housing needs assessment, um, came out in September eleventh. So the housing needs assessment was prepared, uh, by economic and planning systems incorporated. And it kind of just gave us a focus as to why we should focus on housing. Now, of course, twenty eighteen and today is very, very different. A lot of what's on there, uh, if you go through it, is actually still very applicable outside of, of course, the data is much different than what it used to be, but it's still, in my opinion, served as a really good, um, guiding for us, um, to look at because it is a really comprehensive, really well-written, uh, resource. Um, it gave us access to general needs as to what the general needs of that time were um, and, uh, potential solutions, which is where the housing authority comes in as a, um, housing governance option. Uh, there are other housing governance options on there that we could have taken through, but I'll kind of discuss why we landed on this one. But I just want to kind of opiate a little bit here. Um, in a small community like Lake County, having a small, having a single organization to coordinate funding, policy, development and administering housing activities is likely to be more efficient than multiple organizations. Then goes on to say, the most important consideration in determining how to govern housing activities is ensuring the chosen organization has the capacity and resources to meet the local needs. Of course, it's a much higher ask than it used to in twenty eighteen, um, today, since we're in a much different landscape in terms of how much of a crisis we're in terms of housing, but, um, the point of it is we should stay committed to this route, um, now that we're into it, right? This is further enforced by the Housing Action Plan, um, that was really, uh, helped run by the Housing Push in twenty nineteen. Um, this was done by Compel Consulting, Wilford, um, Willard Heard, Al Ossie and Reese Consulting Incorporated. Um, they gave us a lot of resources in that twenty nineteen, um, study with specifically a timeline as to when things should get done and where we should be by certain times. Spoiler, it's could be never really cheap, a lot of those, but, um, we're certainly getting one now. Um, funding strategies, you know, what we should do with these restrictions, what to keep in mind and other such things. Um, and there's a lot more into it that I think, again, is a very valuable resource that we should depend more on. Uh, but hopefully we can replicate that with the, uh, future needs assessment. One of the things that did cover specifically is it made the recommendation to turn the Leadville Housing Authority into a multi-jurisdictional housing authority or create a separate multi-jurisdictional housing authority. Now, for various reasons, we ended up just creating a new multi-jurisdictional housing authority, which is the Leadville Lake County Regional Housing Authority as we know it today. But that's, uh, a big reason as to why we ended up with this and not another, uh, model, uh, that was, for example, highlighted in the previous twenty eighteen study. Which leads us into, of course, skipping twenty twenty because we all know what happened, um, twenty twenty-one with, uh, uh, July housing, uh, director position. So July twenty twenty-one is when we first committed to having a, uh, housing director position. We didn't hire at that point, but we did commit the funds to be able to do that. Um, which was Jackie Purderson. Eventually that led towards, um, on August second, twenty twenty-two, the IGA approval to create the Leadville Lake County Regional Housing Authority, um, which you're going to, IGA is included in your packet, but that does, um, have Jackie's role as part of the executive director, um, formerly the housing director. So, um, that whole IGA is old and this one kind of takes precedent over it. So the uh, regional housing authority IGA is the most recent housing authority IGA in for that specific position. So that's why the two icons go towards helping fund, uh, the regional housing authority rather than housing director, which is what it was mission centered for. And then finally in December twenty-two, um, in December twenty twenty-two, uh, we have our first Leadville Lake County Regional Housing Authority meeting. So that's where it all started. And we kind of, from there, we've established a lot of things, but specifically the projects we took in on the Dola Grant Project. The Dola Grant is, um, as Tim had mentioned, the Lake County, um, government is the primary applicant. It was the whole debruising and the regional housing authority did not exist at the time, but the regional housing authority is still focused on getting that done, um, despite it being primarily in collaboration with the city, but primarily, um, applied by the county. Currently, the outcome of this project is that we have two parcels. Um, could you pull that up real quick for me, please?
Which one do you want to see first?
Uh, let's go with the hospital.
The hospital?
Yeah.
Okay.
So the hospital parcel is, um, located, what we refer to as the hospital parcel, um, is located on West Sixth across from Dexter Street or directly east of, of the LC Bag Building. Give a second. Okay. So as you can see there, that is a parcel that we're looking at for the, as what we refer to as the hospital parcel. Um, there's no other hospital parcel, but that's what it's commonly referred to as when we speak about it.
It's directly across the parking lot from the Village Generation building?
Uh, yeah, directly.
Excellent.
So the other parcel, uh, that we got is the school district parcel, or what we refer to as the school district parcel. Um, not going to get too into details about either of these or why they exist or anything, but, um, the school district parcel is between fourth and third west, um, just south of the hospital.
Stop me if you're going to cover this in a second, but the two parcels are quite a bit different in size.
Yeah, yeah.
How many units will each parcel potentially be able to hold, you know?
Um, I don't remember the exact amount of units per parcel, but around, we're trying to cover around twenty-two units for the whole project.
Between the two parcels?
Yeah. Um, correct me if I'm wrong.
No, that's correct.
That's a lot of housing. That'd be good. The, uh, is it the hospital parcel that's the smaller of the two parcels?
Yeah.
Thank you.
So, uh, the, the plan is to cover twenty-two units. However, with the shift that happened is actually for evaluating, um, housing for the Harrison Ball Field. Uh, that is something that we also added on to this project, um, since we've gone down drastically from our initial, um, units, uh, because of various reasons, including contamination and title issues, et cetera.
Um, but it's smaller units because the parcels are smaller, correct?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, and, um, because of that, we've gone down to twenty-two units. However, we've also committed to evaluating, uh, Harrison Ball Field for housing projects and being able to really plan for the future. And that is definitely a very future plan being not necessarily a present thing. And that's what we call the school district parcel.
Wait, sorry, did you say the Harrison Ball Fields are called the school district?
No, no, no. Um, this, what you're seeing right now is the school district or parcel, which is just south of the hospital. So those buildings you see up there at the very top are the hospital.
Exactly. That's the hospital.
Yeah.
Thank you.
And Harrison Ball Field was his own complete project, um, independently kind of of the two parcels. So these two are specifically going to be slated for development. Harrison Ball Field, we're kind of just, uh, testing to see what fits, what makes sense. And we're going through the whole process of planning for it, right? Um, as versus where this isn't really too into the planning phase as much as it is we're planning to move forward with the development.
These two are ready for development.
Not necessarily, no. Um, this, we're going to get it ready for development. So the, the point of the Dola Grant is specifically to fund putting in a lot of the utilities to help lower the cost of, um, houses, uh, that would be there.
Lower the cost of development.
Exactly, yeah.
If you already have the Dola Grants, the Dola Grants have already been awarded.
Yes. Yes, um, so, um, the Dola Grant is specifically, yeah, for implementing the infrastructure for, um, cheaper development, um, in essence. And of course, as a nice bonus, we're also doing a, uh, evaluation of the Harrison Ball.
Do you have a map of the Harrison Ball Fields?
Yes, I do, but I did not send it out. Um, I can email you all that.
Um, I, I don't know where it is, so.
Yeah, it's right next to the elementary school.
The new elementary school. The kind of north of the new elementary school.
Yeah.
If you walk up Harrison, on the left-hand side, you'll pass the elementary school, and then there's actually a ball field there that is sometimes used. And then there's a bunch of other just open space.
Elementary school. It's twelve acres and then there's.
Okay, the big, okay, yes, west park all the way.
Part of.
Okay.
Looking at this property.
The libraries, right?
School district and trying to figure out what they need. An admin building if they need, um, a bus barn, whatever they need to make that all one site and then to add a rec component to it as well, so that we're not losing anything. Um, it should have a ton of open space. There is some concern, um, that the sewer infrastructure is not going to necessarily support a lot of housing. So the first thing that we're doing is, uh, we have an RFP out to engineering to do a flow study on the sewer, um, to determine so that we know before we get into this.
That is the current weak link for sanitation is that specific area, yeah.
And we'll, of course, recover this at later dates if you need to fully remember that.
So it's a needs analysis right now on Harrison Ball Fields. That's really what that is.
So we have a master plan it and, and during the engineering study initially just, uh, find out what our limitations are.
Jackie, are the Dola Grants necessarily linked to having to have three parcels or they're okay with just, because I remember originally there were those different three.
Right.
They're okay with just shifting the grant money to those two?
Yeah, so they initially, you know, we, we thought we were going to do seventy-eight, eighty-two units when we had the county property, which were um, both sixteen lot parcels. Um, and when we lost those, that was significant. Um, and then we also didn't get the full, um, school district site that we wanted. Um, and so our numbers dropped dramatically. And so to try and keep our, um, proposal strong, the Harrison Ball Field conversation came up that this has got great connectivity. It's close to everything. Um, and it's, you know, it used to be housing for primates, um, and the potential to make that a really community, um, wonderful asset.
So the Dola Grants weren't cut back, but we added the Harrison Ball Field to fill out the rest of that.
Yeah, so, so the master planning and the engineering and so forth is all part of the brand.
Fantastic.
And the ball fields are owned by the school district?
It's owned by the county. Twelve acres are owned by the county and there's two acres owned by the school district.
Thank you.
So, uh, this project is currently being managed by, uh, Michael Yermin. That was a decision that the board had made recently. Um, and that's kind of where we stand today. Um, project is being specifically spearheaded by Michael Yermin. So he's kind of the person to, um, uh, ask in terms of progress for that. Of course, he, uh, comes to the board and gives, uh, updates as to, uh, where the project is.
What will Mr. Yermin's responsibilities actually be? Will he actually be the one to hire the developer, uh, or the, the person constructing the units? What, what are his? What are his responsibilities?
His specific goals are to, um, get the brands ball rolling. So, um, it is basically if you need to get the infrastructure there, um, that is the most important part of this role. Now, in terms of the development, I believe that is still something that. Now, in terms of the development, I believe that is still something that the board has to approve, of course, and go through. Though it seems like it might be something in which he could offer advice or be helpful in, but the primary goal. In being there is to get, make sure that the infrastructure is there for that line, which is at the end of this, this year.
So his project is just infrastructure, water, sewer?
Yeah.
And, and how likely do?
But specifically, specifically for utilities.
Yeah, and the Dola Grant is for infrastructure.
Yeah, understood. So the Dola Grant will get these properties ready for development?
Exactly, yes.
That is going to happen by the end of this year.
Would have to for the grants, correct?
Yes.
And the little side thing that I think maybe some of you know is like, Michael Yearman was, when he worked for Southern Colorado Economic Development. I don't even remember all the letters in that, but you know, he was, he was exceedingly helpful in just getting. The groundwork laid so we could get the IGA and get the Dola Grants, like he was. He's has a very deep knowledge and deep experience with. Level Lake County Regional Housing Authority even before its formal inception.
Let me just say, Michael Yearman is all business. He's not messing around.
Yeah, he is fantastic.
So he's capable of dealing with our utilities?
Background and affordable.
Yeah.
He's been responsible for hundreds of units being built.
What kind of reactions have we had from our public utilities to these? Applications? What has Parkville said? What's sanitation department said? What has Excel had to say?
So the conversations have been with Parkville and with Ethel Sam, we haven't talked about Excel yet, so that's a new special conversation relating us.
They're, they're business people, so it would be a different conversation than the other two anyway. So what, what have you had from water and sanitation?
I met with Parkville's board last week on Thursday. I previously met with Michael and with Greg Teeter. It's all sunshine and rainbows, they have pressure, they have water rights, everything's great.
Yeah.
Level sanitation has been a little bit more quickly of the conversation, they. So we're looking at the potential for the Harrison Ball Field because of. The topography, it looks flat, but it's not flat, but a lift station might be required and level sanitation is very.
That's a tough thing for sanitation.
And so, so that's the reason for the close study, that's, you know, why we're doing that first before we get people excited about. You know, housing, we want to make sure that we are.
It's viable, sure. These other two sites, though, don't require lift stations. We have services adjacent and capacity on that side of town, sanitation wise.
Yeah, and so we're going to be investigating that, so one of the RFPs was for the infrastructure for those two sites. And so we met with Marson Engineering today, to have, they, they were the only applicant. For the infrastructure component of the two RFPs that went out, almost for the flow study. There were two applicants for that, JBA and Marson. JBA is. Level Sanitations engineer, and so.
And Marson's very familiar with you, so.
This may not, I don't even know if this is relevant, but do you know off the top of your head, like, how far down West Third? Water and sewer are stubbed?
No, no, and so that's, we had some site analysis done, and that's way above my, my understanding.
That's, that's my neighborhood, so I'm just curious.
You know, we don't know, in terms of.
Isn't there development past that location?
Well, there's high school, but there are no, there are no structures or it's just.
But there's infrastructure past that.
Well, that's my question, because like I know on West Second, it ends at just past Loomis. And then.
Well, sure, because of, because of the curve there, and that would make sense.
But on West Third, like at Loomis, residences end.
Right.
And then this lot is somewhat beyond it, so that's why, that's why.
And that was why I was wondering, is if there was anything past that other than the high school?
Yeah.
But the high school would.
Well, there's a guy who lives in his camper and has a, has like a little warehouse there. I don't know what his utilities are.
Probably don't want that.
And we don't know a lot about the hospital site either, that was just acquired. And it was not part of the site analysis, obviously, because we were looking at the other locations. So it's been a fun day. Again, you know, Parkville said everything was great.
Yeah, and Parkville has plenty of supply, it's, that, that probably would never come up as the issue, it'll be sanitation. We're, we're very lucky, except that everything they do has to be limited by sanitation.
Well, sanitation doesn't have enough supply?
There's, there's plenty, yeah, that's, that's good.
Two is that while we've been having all these conversations about. In the different sites and the, and the grant applications and everything, but tap fees, one at fifty percent. So that, of course, has demolished our.
So how do we approach, how do we approach? What control do we have or what sway would we have? About tap fees for the development of affordable housing? How, how do we address that?
You can always negotiate with the boards, it's difficult for them to give easements or lesser the cost of it for affordable. Housing projects, and that's something that.
Have they proven to do that in the past? I mean, specifically.
I think Parkville gave a quarter for de- decrease for like ADUs on the same property. I know there's conflict, or not conflict. There was uncertainty in the sanitation district about what they can do. And, and if they.
As for service or?
In terms of tap fee reductions.
Where, okay, and is anybody have any idea where those limitations come from?
Their, whatever their.
Is it their constitution that?
It's the interpretation of that, and I think that's where the discussion is right now over.
Does City Council have any? Does City Council have any control over sanitation? These are very naive, general questions, so. Completely separate entity, they, they, they're not beholden to the city in any way, shape, or form.
Yeah, both, both Parkville and sanitation are operating that way, they have their own boards and their own elections that they run.
Understood, I just didn't know if they were. In cooperation with or, or completely independent. Thank you.
And it's, it comes up with other communities that they're under, you know, say the county. Or the city, that, you know, tap fees can be waived, and so that's a huge part of increasing the affordability component.
We need a public relations campaign.
And can I just say that. The housing authority would like to have a work session with City Council.
And this is maybe discussion that's more appropriate for that.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
We'd like to have that sometime after our February twenty-first meetings.
Very good. It's a lot of.
Invest a lot of these. Questions at that point.
Yeah, I don't mean to drag you down, sorry.
It's exciting when these questions come up, and I think that. It's easy to get bogged down in the challenges and some of the setbacks that inevitably occur, but I think. Kind of like Mr. Light was saying, I think it's our responsibility to really tell the successes. That in this very brief time that the housing, Regional Housing Authority has been in, in existence, it is. Been remarkably successful.
Absolutely.
So, that is basically where we're at in terms of the Level Lake County Regional Housing Authorities. Of course, specifically starting with projects, we're, of course, doing a lot of internal work as to organizing the board and really establishing. Proper organization, where we have consultants to be able to. Figure out how we can best establish ourselves as a proper organization. And we're going forward with that work, but in terms of projects, that is the project specifically that then. Presented to the Level Lake County Regional Housing Authority Board and have been taken on by them.
And please feel free to reach out to anyone else. If you have questions, because there's a lot of other projects going on too that. Housing Authority aren't necessarily involved in, but know about.
Yeah.
Yeah, so.
Well, I thank you very much, and I thank Council, I know it's been a very long night, and this has been a tremendous amount of really important information. Jackie, I was looking up at the, up at the screen, I, I was like, oh, you know, she's there, and I turned around after. You, you just sort of, you snuck in.
Thank you for joining us.
All right, it is, it is. Eight fifty-one, and this work session is adjourned. Before, okay, will you take?